Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Agenda. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, we're going to start off with our proclamation today. Rare Disease Day, read by Councilmember Karen Stratton. And we have, I believe, Mary McDermott here. Join her. If Mary wants to come up to the podium, Councilmember Stratton will read, and then we'll give you a chance to say hi.
Okay, perfect. And I'll bring it down to you. Welcome, everyone. Whereas almost 30 million Americans are affected by nearly 7,000 diseases and conditions considered rare in the United States, and whereas when the national statistics are put on Spokane's population, approximately 6.8% of adults and 22% of children are affected by rare diseases in our region, and whereas while the public may be familiar with some rare diseases, many patients and families affected by less widely known rare diseases bear a large share of the burden of funding, research, care coordination, and raising public awareness to support the search for treatments and support. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim February 28, 2023, as Rare Disease Day in Spokane, joining the global movement dedicated to raising awareness and generating change for the 300 million people living with a rare disease in our community and around the world.
Yeah, awesome. So, thank you. Obviously, my daughter here, Ruth, has a rare disease. This is our sixth year getting this proclamation. She is six years old, by chance, not by chance, but that's why. So, we're just trying to bring more awareness. We have a Rare Disease Day event. We usually have it in person at WSCU, but this year it'll be on Zoom. We have 100 people signed up already, and last year we had 140 people show up. So if that gives you a little bit of glimpse of how many people are affected, it's ALS, it's childhood cancers, it's anything with gene mutation usually in a child. So those are the populations we're talking about. And if you're talking 22% of kids, that's a big percentage of classrooms that we're in. So we just want to bring awareness. If you see a kid that can't sit still like this one, that's probably also an indication, right? But we love them, and they make our life so much better, and we just want to make sure they're getting the care they need. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have three reappointments, and why don't we just hear all of them? We'll vote together on all of them.
Okay. Reappointment of Mary Winkus to Plan Commission for a term of three years from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025. Reappointment of Drew Clement Clement to Design Review Board as Architect, term for three years from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025. And Mark Brower, reappointment to Design Review Boards for Civil Engineer Chair for a term of three years from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, all three are reappointed. Thank you, all three of you, for your service. And if you're interested in serving on a board or commission for the city, go to MySpokane and punch in boards and commissions. You'll see all the boards and commissions. They'll say what they do. It usually have, if there's any openings, and if there's not any openings on the one you're interested in, it usually has the terms of the people who are there, because you can see when an opening might be coming up. Just about all of them, you apply to the mayor's office, and the mayor decides who to appoint, and then council interviews, and almost always confirms them. So, thanks for that. We are about to move to open forum, and we've got a full cohort of people, 15 people. And just reminder, since we changed our rules at the beginning of the year, we do it at the early part of the meeting. We do two minutes of testimony. It will turn yellow when there's one minute left. You can talk about anything that has to do with city business that's not on tonight's agenda or the advanced agenda. We ask both for open forum and regular testimony that you address your comments to me, the meeting chair, that you not use any profanity, pound your fists, yell, hold up signs, clap, boo. We do clap at the beginning for salutations and things like that, but for this space, even if you totally agree with someone, please don't clap. And of course, if you disagree with them, please don't boo. We're trying to create a safe space for people. If you wander from the topic at hand, I might interrupt you and ask you to come back to the topic. Other council members, if they think you're off-topic or in violation of the rules, can also bring a point of order to me. I will say, we have a packed house tonight, which we're so glad to see you all, but if sometimes people start chattering in the back, it's very distracting and it's disrespectful to people. So please, if you want to have a conversation about what's going on, if you could just head out into the Chase Gallery out there, the speakers are there so that you can hear what's going on, and you'll hear your name called. So with that, what I like to do is call up three people at a time, and the next two, if you just take a seat somewhere in the front, then you'll be ready to go, and then we'll go quicker than that. The other thing, actually, before I go, is we are going to go a little bit out of order of the agenda, and we are saving the landlord-tenant ordinances for last, because that seems to have the most interest in it. And our meeting is scheduled to go to 9:30. If we don't finish at 9:30, either it'll bump to the next meeting, and there won't be new sign-ups for testimony, it'll be just whoever's left, or we can vote to extend later this evening. So with that, the first three people I have signed up in order are Rick Bowkuk, Christine Quinn, and then Sarah Hunter. So Rick, come on up.
Greetings. I like to promote, keep promoting our arts, chalk art and watercolor, painting on our sidewalks. It's because of the temporary meeting, you know, and I know that there's people out in the city listening, you know, and I'm going to say that we have a big park downtown. Riverfront Park has a big sidewalk, and the weather's going to start changing, and I would encourage people to bring their kids and bring boxes of chalk and paint Riverfront Park and paint the sidewalk with the chalk, you know. And if you get a chance to paint the whole downtown with chalk, you know, I think you should do it. Start building this art culture up a little bit stronger. And there's rules, you know, you don't block doorways and you don't block the sidewalk, but the sidewalks downtown are really wide, so you don't have to really worry about that. I mean, just don't pick a narrow sidewalk. And if somebody comes out and starts telling you you can't do it, then what you do is you tell them to call the police. Call the police, so that the police will tell them that we can do it. So, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Rick. Christine Quinn, welcome. And then after Christine is Sarah Hunter, and then Sandy, looks like it starts with a V.
Nichols.
Nichols, what's it then? Sorry. Sandy. Welcome, Christine.
Hi, I'm Christine Quinn from West Hills, and four of our neighbors received letters from Matthew Daly, who is the attorney for Catholic Charities.
I'm going to stop you just for one second. I forgot one of the ground rules that we have. You can still talk about what your issue is, but we do ask that if you're going to talk about litigation between people not with the city, if it's with the city, that's fine.
This is actually not litigation.
I know. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I forgot to say it, and I'm like, oh, certainly that won't come up, but this borders on it.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll start you over. Thanks.
All right. Four neighbors received these letters. The allegations are untrue and defamatory. We believe the letters were meant to harass and intimidate and bully us, and they are untrue, these allegations. These things did not happen. I'm going to read Sarah's letter, and then she'll finish reading, because it doesn't fit into two minutes. Dear, I am general counsel for Catholic Charities. It has recently come to our attention, over the past few days, you have spent substantial periods parked outside the Catalyst property, including on the project's private property. We have also been informed you have repeatedly engaged with staff and personnel in increasingly hostile and confrontational manner. By this letter, we demand you cease and desist such improper conduct. We have been informed that you have entered onto and parked your vehicle on the Catalyst Project's property. We understand you have been advised by our neighborhood safety team that you are not permitted to be on the Catalyst Project's property. By this letter, we give you formal notice, you are not permitted on any property owned by CCEW and any of its affiliates. Any further entry will be considered trespass, and law enforcement will be notified. Staff and personnel have reported concerns regarding you lurking outside their places of employment. Your increasingly hostile and aggressive interactions with them. Staff and personnel feel threatened by your repeated and prolonged presence outside their place of employment. Given the hostility of your interactions, we demand you cease and desist this improper stalking behavior.
Christine? That brings you to the end of your time.
Okay, so I want to say, this was written to a nurse, a frontline worker with three small children.
Okay. That's what we want to hear before you go. So, Sarah is next.
And I have copies for everyone.
Sarah Hunter, and then Sandy Nichols, and then Justice Forall.
All right. I am who this letter was addressed to. They addressed it to Sarah Schmending. That was my former last name. I am now Sarah Hunter from West Hills. Your recent activities at the Catalyst Project constitute harassment and stalking, and the sheer amount of time that you have devoted to these activities evens a troubling preoccupation that places Catholic Charities staff and personnel in reasonable apprehension for their safety. On behalf of Catholic Charities, its staff and its personnel, we demand that you cease and desist your improper and unlawful activities. It goes on, repeats the same sort of words that you've heard, stalking, lurking, hostile. I have been there twice. Once, the day of the protest, and then on January 11, there was a two-alarm fire. I was picking up my kids at 2:30, actually, 2:23, because my son's face is right at the fence at school, at Libby Center, and I drive them on the freeway, and we saw the fire. So we stopped. All three kids wanted to see it. And I was approached by a security guard that asked me to leave, and I did leave. I then drove across the street, parked on the opposite side, and Dawn Kinder came out and approached my vehicle, telling me that I was not allowed to video record, that it was legal. I said, I immediately shut off my camera, because I didn't know the laws, and I didn't want to break any of them. When this letter, she continued to come at me, and I finally said to Dawn, I'm not doing anything illegal now. I would like you to leave. I said it three times. She finally backed away. And this is how it came, eight days after the incident, to my home. Both my wife and I were appalled. We lost sleep over it. We felt bullied. I didn't really know what to do, so I brought it to work. I asked all my coworkers, what would you do? They said, seek counsel. I did. I spoke to several, and they also said to go to the press, which I did. The reason I'm bringing it to you is because I think you should understand the people that you somewhat employ, I don't know the proper word for it, but how they behave to the neighborhood and the people that they're working with supposedly. I didn't do it, so I'm not worried about it getting out.
Sarah.
There's no video footage of it.
We're at the end of your time today.
Not a problem. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming down. And then Sandy.
What did you?
And after Sandy is Justice Forall, and then Bree Gordon.
My name's Sandy Nichols. I'm from West Hills as well. Answer me this. I've always thought that the homeless shelters would cause crime. All I have to do is look downtown and what the House of Charity did to that neighborhood, hear the stories, and see the skid row squall that's been there for years. But Rob McCann, president of Catholic Charities, knows a shelter brings crime with it too. He said so publicly when he opened the Catalyst Shelter in West Hills. Yep, he said, drug dealers, human traffickers, and criminals were all coming to the neighborhood. I certainly assumed it was going to happen, but unlike Rob McCann, I was pointing it out and said so all along. He never divulged it once until he opened the shelter. Not once. He didn't want West Hills to know. He never shared with West Hills that crime was going up, that crime was going to increase with the arrival of the Catalyst Project. To stop me, he said, to stop me from saying so, Catholic Charities sent me a cease and desist order to stop declaring crime would increase. I was accused of being reckless and defamatory and damaging to Rob McCann's reputation by saying it, and also handing out pamphlets that said so as well. So it's very hard to explain how I was so wrong and misguided about the coming crime increase, when he predicted exactly the same thing I was accused of at the opening ceremony with the governor. He predicted that Catalyst was bringing a crime wave with it, and again, in his own words, with drug dealers, human traffickers, and criminals, and he was going to have to turn his shelter into a fortress. Yep, crime was going to go up. You can't make this stuff up. The cease and desist orders is rubbish, and three other orders were received by West Hills residents. They were nothing but more than attempts to muzzle our criticism and intimidate us. And because we were acting in good faith, they had to make up these accusations to garner public support to discredit us. The only reckless and defamatory thing here is the cease and desist order itself and Catholic Charities themselves by trying to float a smear campaign against longtime residents, trying to keep McCann and its crime circus out of West Hills. Thanks.
Thanks for coming down, Sandy.
And we're not going away.
Justice Forall, then Bree, and then Barbara, I think Paplo. I'm not sure exactly how to say that.
Hello, my name is Justice Forall. I'm a Spokane resident. One second. Last weekend, we had a beautiful snowfall hit our city. While it's a beautiful look at, for most, it's a little level of inconvenience, and for the people of Spokane, it varies. I've heard and witnessed the conditions of below freezing temperatures and how, what the effects it has on people without access to housing or safe shelter. The bitter cold hits us all differently. While some have access to accommodations that allow us to peacefully view the snow, others have a constant struggle. Those that are struggling are yelled at through a loudspeaker. You do not belong here. From my local SPD, meant to protect and serve. Not only are people freezing to death, our officers constantly move people from the little protection they have against the weather. This weather is not new to Spokane. These conditions happen yearly, but somehow the inaction is never a surprise. With elections coming up, we have heard crickets when it comes to the actions of Spokane City Council in addressing this issue. With the reminder that last year, the mayor of Spokane said, we make it easy to be homeless in Spokane. The truth is, we make it hard to be housed. We have the highest rent increase in the country, while the quality of life has not improved. Homelessness will continue to rise as we find new ways to gouge and dehumanize the people of Spokane. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Justice. Bree? After Bree is Barbara, and then Jennifer Bates.
So in 2019, I began working in homeless services. After living a selfish life in the throes of addiction and homelessness, I was given a gift I could never repay, and that was hope. For the last three years, I've set out to do the same for those experiencing homelessness. In November of 2023, the Salvation Army took over the Track Shelter. What appeared to be a positive situation on the outside was an immensely cruel situation on the inside. Individuals were getting illegally searched, no handwashing stations, three separate outbreaks that were never reported to the media, staff, or shelter providers. A Salvation Army manager arrived in the middle of the night and stole medications from the guests without warning. A man died from MRSA inside of the confines of the shelter. Guests were being evicted for what staff referred to as being annoying. Guests with more than one animal were put on notice to get rid of them or leave the shelter. People on the verge of hypothermia were being turned away at the door during the cold snap. I reported each incident to the city as I felt it was my duty to protect the most vulnerable in this community. January 2023, I lost my job. Sorry. I was fired because I spoke out against illegal documents being filled out for Camp Hope. I myself now am on the verge of being homeless, and nothing has changed. Two women have been raped inside of that shelter. The chief caring neighborhood has armed themselves with guns. The business owners are going to camps with guns to sweep themselves. This is an absolute plea, because we have turned homelessness into a profitable industry. We are giving millions of dollars to people to not solve the problem. Sorry. The issues surrounding the Track Shelter are still there. People are getting...
Bree, your time's up tonight, but thanks for coming down.
It's okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Barbara? And go ahead, and I should have said this, go ahead and introduce yourself when you come up, even if I said your name, and tell us what city you're from. And after Barbara is Jennifer Bates, and then Missy, I believe it's Busick.
Hi, I'm Barbara Papki. I live in Spokane. I live down the 195, and I'm part of the Citizens for Action for Lataut Valley group. I thought there would be more of them here tonight, but I think a lot are coming next month to your meeting. But I just want to reiterate the need to continue the moratorium on building. There's a building area going on right near my house, and they were there the other day taking everything out, buildings, parking lots, to get ready to build. Their demolition permit was going to be up, so they figured they would get that done. And they're planning to start building in March, when the, when the permit, the moratorium goes off. So we're hoping that we can get you guys to continue the moratorium, because they're just, the committee is just starting to meet with all the people involved in the different areas, the police department, the fire department, the school district. So it's not going to be done in six months. The answers won't be here in six months. We need a year, 18 months, maybe two years, for this to be solved, because we can't continue to build and have all that traffic on the 195, which is already a terrible highway to travel on. So that's all I'm here for, is to remind you that we would like to have the continuation of the moratorium.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Jennifer Bates, and then Missy, and then Anton Valoum.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Bates. I live in Cliff Keta neighborhood in Spokane. I wrote this quite a while ago, but was unable to come down to read it. So thank you for letting me read this tonight, even though it seems kind of out of date. The Camp Hope was not a nuisance or a protest. It was a community where people lived, just like Hilliard, West Central, East Central, Lincoln Heights, or Comstock. Crem 2 News continued to refer to Camp Hope as "that homeless camp" by I-90 in Freya, further dehumanizing the residences there. Ex-Sheriff Kenezovich sounded like Hitler wanting to clear the ghettos of Europe of nuisance people. I wonder if the sheriff or the mayor actually heard how they sounded when they referred to human beings so callously. Clear the camp, indeed. Speaking of Camp Hope, this council should issue a proclamation of appreciation for Julie Garcia and Jewel's Helping Hands for making progress in working with more people, Camp Hope to move people to permanent housing and had boots on the ground, while the city and county did not. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Missy? Come on up. And after Missy is Anton, and then CJ, don't have a last name.
Hi, I'm Missy Rouse, and I'm here to, I started volunteering for SCAR, the burrito program, on Sunday mornings about five months ago. And the first time I showed up, I met a homeless man, Scott, and they suggested that we don't go out by ourselves, you know, that two is safer. And so Scott and I, for the next five weeks, went out together and picked up garbage, and I heard a situation. Scott, 63, he became homeless four months before I met him. And the reason he became homeless was because... And the reason he became homeless was because he had been a machinist his whole life. He lost his job in COVID, and then him and his roommate couldn't make rent because the landlord raised the rent. So he was reduced to everything put in a suitcase that rolls with him, and he goes from different shelters and the conditions...he's been sick, he said, since he's been homeless. He's a very nice man. The first thing he said to me, the very first day I met him, was, "I hate taking all the time, and I'd like to give back." And so that's why he picks up garbage every day. I mean, every Sunday. And anyway, this last Sunday, he showed up, and he had been beaten up by two young guys. And the guy said that he had insulted his girlfriend. Long story short, if you met Scott or knew Scott, he's a very polite man, and he would never insult a woman. He's a very good person, but because of the conditions of COVID and the rent being raised and everything else, he became homeless. First time ever in his life, just lived a normal life, had been married, has kids, everything else, and it all just because the rent was raised too high for two people. Sorry.
Thanks for coming down, Missy. Anton Valon, after Anton, CJ, and then Mike Gavirachi.
My name is Anton. Okay, and I'm going to read something out that affects everybody in this room, Republicans and Democrats both. And I think this is what we should be concerned about. Oh, come on. Legally, the Indian law was adopted within the laws of the United States in how to govern the Indian tribes and non-Indians. Not just the Indian tribes, it says "non-Indians." Perhaps, most important, Johnson's acceptance of the doctrine of the discovery into the United States law preserved the legacy of 1,000 years of European racism and colonialism directed against non-Western people while the tasks of conquest and colonialization had not yet been fully actualized on the entire American continent. The originary legal rules and principles of federal Indian law set down by Marshall and Johnson versus McIntosh, and his discourse of conquest ensured that future acts of genocide would proceed on a rationalized legal basis. This should scare you. This is what you're up against, and here we are arguing about petty stuff that, you know, it was because of that why people are becoming homeless.
Thanks for coming down, Anton.
Okay, thank you.
CJ, that might be Cody. Welcome. After CJ is Mike Gavirachi, and then Patricia Nalt.
Hello, Spokane City Councilors. Thank you for having me. I wanted to come here today to bring attention and concern to something I've only recently discovered two weeks ago that's within the works of our county, and that is being part of the proposed GTN Express Pipeline. For any that are unaware, the Gas Transmission Northwest Pipeline Extension is a proposed pipeline expansion that would run from the borders of Canada, then through North Idaho, then crosses through here into Washington State, into this county in the Liberty Lake region, which means it would have to go through the Spokane River onto Walla Walla and then to California, and then on its way to California. Notably, the company that proposes this pipeline is TC Energy, the same company that was behind the Keystone XL Pipeline. This particular pipeline is said to increase the amount of frat gas up to 150 million per day. According to analysis from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, this pipeline could result in up to 200,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide being emitted yearly, with another 3 million metric tons of downstream emissions. And may I say, with Washington State's goal of reducing emissions to 95% by 2050, how exactly does this project get any closer to that goal? Not to mention with the history of pipeline accidents and spills, pollution that are only exasperated by pipelines being built underneath bodies of water. As somebody that has had many sleepless nights thinking of our environmental future, for which I know I'm not alone in that, it's frightening to know that this infrastructure with this kind of impact on our local community is on the debate table despite the amount of national pushback, especially from indigenous communities who are all too familiar with the destruction of their lands. I asked City Council if they have any power on a county basis to either appeal or be a voice opposition, a voice for those whose future is cloudy environmental catastrophe. Please be a voice against that future being drowned in oil and fire. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. Mike, and then Patricia Nalt, and then Stuart Lee.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gavirachi. I'm a small developer and landowner here in Spokane. And for the past few years, you know, I have been advocating for infrastructure improvement, mainly unpaved roads, which we have, you know, 50-plus miles of it in Spokane. And that makes it, you know, challenging for developers because that infrastructure cost, you know, it passes on to us, and it makes it, you know, in some cases, kind of, you know, not economically feasible. Second, I want to also develop this property I own into affordable housing, and I thought of, you know, what's one of the solutions we can provide, you know, to the tenant is make it, you know, rent-to-own type of, you know, property. And thirdly, I want to bring up, you know, a modular factory. To modular factory, a prefabrication can be a part of solution for affordable housing. And I want to start, you know, a modular factory here in Spokane so we can build, you know, hundreds of homes and single-family homes and apartment complexes and what. And I want to see what you, you know, if you want to learn more, I want to pass, you know, my information. And also, I want to wish, March 8 is, you know, International Woman's Day. I want to wish you all woman, you know, Happy Woman's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Patricia Nalt, and then Stuart Lee.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members. My name is Patricia Nalt. I have lived in the Latah Hangman neighborhood for eight years and wish to address the council about the current moratorium on building permits for residential structures in my area and the Grandview Thorpe neighborhood. The six-month period, which is coming to an end, was expected to allow the Washington State DOT to work with the city to identify solutions for providing the facilities needed to serve new growth and development in the area. The ordinance specifically mentions updating of the transportation impact fees and general facilities charges, and notes that the moratorium may be effective for up to one year if a work plan is developed for related studies providing for such a longer period, and that a moratorium may be renewed for one or more six-month periods if subsequent public hearing is held and findings of factor made prior to each renewal. I have read the posted updates on the work done to date by the Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committee but have not seen a final recommendation from the Plan Commission. Assuming that the council will be in a position to revise the transportation impact fees and general facilities charges to better cover the cost of system improvements reasonably related to new development, I am asking that the moratorium be extended to develop a detailed implementation plan for the aforementioned facilities needed to serve new growth and development. Providing for the long-term safety of citizens is the responsibility of city government. Deficiencies in the existing roads and streets in this area of the city, which could hamper response to emergencies such as fire, train derailments, or industrial chemical releases, have been documented. The city may be unable to carry out its responsibilities if residential development is allowed to proceed in areas with questionable public safety access. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia. Stuart Lee? Is Stuart here? All right. Last call, Stuart Lee? All right. That brings us to the end of open forum. And I just wanted to say one other thing. Under our rules, we listen to you. We don't engage, and we don't respond, even if you ask us questions. So just so you know, we're not trying to be rude, and it's not because we don't care what you're saying. That's just our rules. We are allowed to do a little information if appropriate, and I will just mention that we, at our committee meeting today, the public infrastructure meeting, we did get a report on traffic impact fee updates and utility connection fees and what those are. And there'll be ordinance that will be filed Wednesday on what those updates are proposed to be, and that will be heard on March 13. And so it'll be a little bit before it's posted online. I'm not sure how soon they'll be posted online, the ordinances.
Probably on Friday when the advanced agenda packet goes out.
This Friday? Yeah, so this Friday, if you look on Google City Council, Spokane City Council Advanced Agenda, you can find what those proposals are. With that, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Go ahead and read. We did take at least one thing off. Item one, we deferred it, but the rest of it, Terry will read.
Reports, contracts, and claims, number one, it has been deferred to March 27, 2023. Item number two has been deferred to March 6, 2023. Item number three, consultant agreement with JRPA Integrated Solutions LLC, St. John, Washington, for broadband fiber consultant services to continue work on expanding broadband fiber infrastructure in the city of Spokane from February 1, 2023 through June 15, 2023, not to exceed $75,000 excluding applicable tax. Number four, personal service agreement with Toby's Body and Fender Spokane for auto body repair services for the Fleet Services Department from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2026, annual expenditure not to exceed $300,000. Item number five, accept subaward grant funds through the YWCA for the Department of Justice's Office on Violence Against Women fiscal year 2022, improving criminal justice responses to domestic violence, Dating Violence Sexual Assault and Stalking Grant Program, $268,240. Relates to Special Budget Ordinance C-36358. Item number six, subaward to the Spokane Regional Domestic Violence Coalition to provide a site coordinator to lead efforts to reduce domestic violence homicides and injuries committed with firearms from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, $223,208. Number seven, agreement with Spokane County Sheriff's Office in conjunction with the Mental Health Field Response Team fiscal year 2022 Grant Program from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, $879,780. Number eight, interlocal agreement with Spokane County and Spokane County Superior Court for the sharing of jury management services from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2025, $10,000, 2023 preliminary estimate. Item number nine, outside special counsel contract memos with A Summit Law Group, Seattle, Washington, to assist the city in labor negotiation and human resource advice, additional $75,000. Total contract amount, $125,000. B Pacifica Law Group, Seattle, Washington, in the matter of Lonny Tofford versus the city of Spokane, additional $100,000. Total contract amount, $200,000. C Anchor, K Towan, and KNL Gates, LLP, Seattle, Washington, to assist the city with the Climate Commitment Act rules and regulations, additional $42,000. Total contract amount, $92,000. Number 10, contract amendment with Rock and DW Construction Incorporated, Spokane Valley, Washington, for additional work on the Spokane Police Department Academy restroom remodel from January 18, 2023 through November 13, 2023, $19,965.75 plus tax. Item number 11, report to the mayor of Pennington, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through February 10, 2023. Total $10,384,392.45 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $9,246,591.96. 11B claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through February 17, 2023, total $7,617,254.19 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $6,574,131.56. See payroll claims of previously approved obligations through February 18, 2023, $8,454,731.44. Number 12, city council meeting minutes for February 6 and February 13, 2023.
All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, is red. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Abstentions? All right, consent agenda is approved. And now we're going to jump around a little bit. We don't have anyone signed up to testify for first reading ordinances, so Ms. Fister, if you could go ahead and read those.
Ordinance C-36360, granting a non-exclusive franchise to use the public right-of-way to provide non-cable telecommunication service to the public to MCI Metro Access Transmission Services LLC, subject to certain conditions and duties as further provided. And Ordinance C-36361, granting a non-exclusive franchise to use the public right-of-way to provide non-cable telecommunication service to the public to FATBEAM LLC, subject to certain conditions and duties as further provided. Ordinance C-36362, relating to the adoption of the Cannon Street Car Suburb Local Historic District Overlay Zone and Design Standards and Guidelines Adopting New Spokane Municipal Code Section 17D.100.290. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
All right. Next, we're going to go to hearing number one, Ordinance C-36357. We do have two people. If you want to go ahead and read that.
H1, final reading ordinance, C-36357, relating to the establishment of a sales and use tax deferral program for affordable housing, creating a new chapter 8.07D of the Spokane Municipal Code.
And council members, can yours oppose? Either of you want to tee that up?
I'll go first this time. We were both working on this simultaneously, not knowing about it, and then we teamed up, got a lot more done. And essentially, this is taking parking lots downtown, surface parking lots, and providing an incentive to convert those into workforce housing. It says affordable here, but in fact, it's workforce housing. That's 50% of the building would need to be workforce, and it's an opportunity for developers here to create density downtown, make our downtown a little bit more livable, and we can layer on different incentives such as MFTEs and other things that would make it desirable to build. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just add that looking at the, I believe it was a 2019 parking study of downtown, it was identified that 30% of downtown is parking lots, and at its peak, less than 60% of it is utilized at its peak. So 40% of all parking spaces are empty, even at the highest part of the day. So there's a lot of parking downtown, a lot of available space, and there's a lot of need in our community for housing, so this meets that need. I would also add that we have heard from people and developers that they don't think that this incentive is enough that will actually spur, and we are glad to hear that and support it, but there's nothing that we can do as a city. We're just simply adopting the state code and state law. So we're hoping that this can get it started, and if we need to look at more expansion of this program, we're happy to advocate that to our state legislators, and we've already been doing that, too.
Yeah, I would add that, in fact, our legislators asked us to put this forward so then they'd have something to work with to make it more enticing for developers, if need be.
You've got two people signed up. Rick, did you sign up for this? Okay. Your handwriting's different on this one from the last one. So Rick Bowcock, and then Andrew Rawls. If Andrew wants to come on down.
I like this idea of putting buildings where the parking lots are. There are those, these people that own these parking lots, they are so unreasonable. They don't put fences up, they put all these signs up, and yet, if somebody walks across that parking lot, they're saying they're trespassing, you know? So a lot of people walk across the parking lot and stuff like that, but I just think about how unfair they are. Personally, I think that they should get rid of all the parking downtown and make it so people that walk downtown, but I don't think that's going to happen. But it would be really nice if it did because it would surely lower down the pollution. I remember when I was working in a scrapyard, I had lead poisoning, and the doctor told me that I had a normal lead poisoning. I said, "What's normal?" He says, "Well, you can walk downtown three blocks and get lead poisoning." That's when they had leaded gas. And he said, "Everybody was getting lead poisoning." So I'm just, I hope you start building buildings back. Because every time they tore a building down, they put a parking lot. It was terrible. God bless Joni Mitchell.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Andrew.
Well, good evening, council president, members of council. Rick is a tough act to follow. Good evening, I'm Andrew Rawls with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the pavement to people ordinance. We do support this development incentive for the owners of surface lots to develop them into mixed-use housing. As you note in the whereas section, recitations, around a third of... housing. As you note in the whereas section, recitations, around a third of greater downtown's land is used in the form of surface lots, most of which are provided for parking. Surface lots are an important part of downtown's transportation system and provide needed access to businesses and residential properties. However, in a real estate market where there was higher demand for those lots, they would be developed for other uses, including housing. The intention of the ordinance is to allow property owners to gain more value out of their surface lots as residential development than they have without it. It's commendable that council is enacting an incentive for property owners to potentially get that additional value from their property as a building rather than as a lot. But it looks to us like, as has already been mentioned, the subsidized housing requirement is probably too high for many property owners to make use of it. We would be glad, of course, to be proven wrong, but having a track record with the ordinance on the books for a period of time, and then property owners would react to it by not responding in a significant way, would provide the basis to go back to our legislators and request the subsidy percentage be reduced below the 50% mark that they have set. And to close, I thank you, council members, Zepon and council member Kneer, for taking initiative on this development incentive. It is commendable that you're enacting an incentive, and we support it and hope that if it's not extensively used, we can work with our legislators to modify it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Any council commentary? All right, before we vote, I'll just note that the city of Spokane put this on our legislative agenda to get passed. And it was actually, I think it took us two sessions to get it passed. There was a lot of arm wrestling over what the exact terms were. And so I'm glad that we're still moving forward, and I hope we'll pass this, and it'll get there faster. Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. And if we could turn to the special budget ordinances now.
Ordinances amending ordinance number C-36345, passed by the city council, December 12, 2022, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in. Ordinance C-36358, Public Safety and Judicial Grants Fund, number one, increased revenue by $268,240. A of the increased revenue, $268,240, is provided by the Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women Grant Program fiscal year 2022, ICJRDV Dating Violence Sexual Assault and Stalking Program. Number two, increased appropriation by $268,240. B of the increased appropriation, $268,240, is to be used to fund .48 full-time employee of an assigned SPD officer for grant-related work. This action arises from the need to accept the Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women Grant Award, relates to Consent Agenda, item number five.
There's no public testimony. Is there any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. We've got one more special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C-36359, Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund, number one, increased revenue by $114,754. A of the increased revenue, $114,754, is provided by the Washington State Legislature solely for one-time training costs incurred as required under enacted legislation. Number two, increased appropriation by $114,754. B of the increased appropriation, $114,754, is provided solely for one-time training costs. This action arises from the need to accept distribution of state funds for recent legislation regarding police training.
All right, we've got one person wanting to testify, Justice Forall. Do you want to come up?
Hello, my name is Justice Forall, Spokane resident. Since 2022, we've given the police millions of dollars every year to, quote, "improve public safety," unquote. Our fear-mongering SPD says that crime is on the rise and the highest it's ever been. So how does this training lower crime? How does this training remove us from the top five deadliest police forces in the nation? Over the past several years, we've been in the top five. We're currently the fourth deadliest police force in the nation. What outcomes can the public expect from these changes and these trainings? The SPD have only a small amount of training hours per year, but at this price, I'm assuming we're training the entire SPD? It's a very pricey training regardless if it's a one-time, entire SPD training, but I believe the public should have some kind of knowledge of, what can we expect? Can we expect better policing? Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Justice. Counsel commentary? I'll just note, we asked a very similar question of the training coordinator today, and they don't have the plans for the actual training, but it will be training. Previously, the legislature gave us funds for training, and not much of it was used for actual training. And so we look forward to dialoguing with them more about what are going to be the topics for it. With that, prepare to vote. All right, that passed seven to zero. And I'd like now to go to ordinance C-36348, the vacation ordinance.
Ordinance C-36348, vacating a portion of 7th Avenue east of Government Way as requested by Catholic Charities, first reading held January 9, 2023.
All right, Eldon, you want to show us what's going on here?
Good evening. Catholic Charities has proposed a vacation in 7th Avenue between Government Way and Hartson Avenue. We had the hearing on this back in January 9. It was approved, subject to conditions. They intend to put a couple of apartment complexes, I think up to 48 units, 24 in each complex, one, two, three-bedroom units. They need to actually consolidate the property by vacating that right-of-way to make that happen. We did have a couple of conditions on there. One of them was that they have no access out to Government Way, which will come through as part of the actual development plans. We'll get a chance to review that. Then we also reserved easements for Comcast, Vista, and Lumen in the right-of-way. And they had some concern about that because we have a full-width easement in there. But at this point in time, they've agreed to that. And if they need to change it somewhere down the line, we'll have a chance to actually review it and possibly amend the ordinance if need be. Anyway, we're just here for final reading of that vacation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Eldon? All right, Eldon, thanks so much for coming down after hours. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. And let's just go to the top of the page then on resolutions and just do a few, and then we'll skip the 36330 and 336 and come back to those last.
Resolution 2023-18, supporting the 90-day due diligence period to establish a regional collaborative effort to effectively manage homelessness and its impacts in the Spokane region.
All right, you might have heard some of this in the news, but basically, some independent folks are trying to get all the governments to work together to come up with a plan for a regional homeless collaboration, where we pool our money and pool our expertise, including private nonprofits, governments, to be more effective. And we've been asked to support a statement in support of a 90-day due diligence period. It's not binding on anyone, and the language has been approved by staff at Spokane Valley and county of Spokane, but we're the first ones to vote on it. And I think the county is voting on it tomorrow at 2:00, and hopefully the Valley that evening. So any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I said quite a bit about this two weeks ago, so I will just say that I support it. I think this is really important. This is the way forward, I think, in terms of our region addressing homelessness. It really is a regional issue. It is not a city of Spokane issue. And so I really appreciate that this is coming forward. I think it's really important that we have everybody at the table and talking in good faith. And so I would just, once again, just encourage us to consider a joint legislative meeting with our neighboring jurisdictions so that we can really not just to talk about this statement or the plans for going forward with a regional authority, but really just to build stronger relationships and trust and be able to work together. Because ultimately, this won't be successful if that doesn't happen. And so I just, once again, want to make that plea that we have a joint legislative meeting, start working through any possible issues that there may be, and hopefully we can move forward together. So leave it there.
Any other commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, this statement really is, again, just declaring a pathway forward for us in how we can collaborate together as a region. And, you know, many of us on this, on the dais, and many people who've been involved in this are people who are studying from different cities around the country where they've been successful in reducing their homelessness. And so this is us, as a part of the effort, we actually are going to be hiring consultants from those other areas to help us understand how they were able to be successful in what they did. And not somewhat successful, but they were able to substantially reduce the amount of folks that were homeless in their area. So I have some hope for this program. I think that it's a really fragile collaboration that we have that we're working on. The difference between Spokane and some of those other areas is that you have more uniformity in government when it comes to ideology than you do in the city of Spokane. But that also gives us a really unique opportunity, because if we're able to come together on this particular issue and establish something that crosses party lines and has the ability to be something we can all get on board with, I think we have a really unique opportunity to do something special. And so I have high hopes for this. I appreciate council president Beggs being in on these talks early with us, and all the other council members, everybody's on board. I appreciate the mayor, you know, taking us to Houston and helping us to understand. And I want to thank Gavin, Rick, and Teresa, everybody that's working on this. Again, it's something that could be really, really good. And I have every faith that we're all going to be able to come together on this.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I support it. We know right now it's very aspirational, but it is a start. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the other entities and nonprofits that have been doing this work already. They've kind of gotten their act together. It's just the leadership in municipalities that have been unable to come together to really look at the funding piece and to build that trust. So as we start engagement, I am extremely hopeful going forward, realizing that it will probably be a very bumpy process.
All right, yeah, I'm super encouraged by this. I think the lessons from Houston and other places, and even in the many years here that I've worked on it, is that when we start focusing on what we do best, and what our skill set, and what approach is working, and spend less time worrying about what other people's approaches are in doing that, and just do our part, it works better. And I remember back in the days of council president, Stucker, working on this very idea before many of the current people in any of these governments were there. And that was the idea. But at that time, even, it was a little, people were a little nervous about it. This whole idea of keeping your jurisdiction and keeping your control was challenging. But I think we've proven in Spokane with the school district, where we actually gave land to the school district for no cost, and then built libraries and schools, that it doesn't really matter. It's all taxpayer dollars. Homelessness doesn't know a border. Impacts of it don't know a border. And so I'm really encouraged. I feel like the last 18 months, the entire community, including the business community, the nonprofit community, have been coming together and focusing on common ground instead of difference. So I'm very hopeful, and I appreciate all the support and everything. And the mayor's office and council are like this on this. And we're just trying to get our friends in the Valley and the county to join us, and that the state of the city. I had a good chat with former mayor Higgins and current mayor Haley, and said, "Hey, we've got no rules or expectations. We just want to sit down and get this figured out." And so I'm confident that we will. So with that, prepare to vote. All right, seven to zero. Next, resolution 19.
Resolution 2023-19, acknowledging the recommendation of the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee for the West Quadrant Tax Increment Financing District in accepting the use of $300,000 in tax increment funding for design planning and implementation of public improvements in the West Central neighborhood portion of the West Quadrant Tax Increment Financing area.
There's nobody requesting public comment on this, but councilmember Stratner is a opponent. Do you want to say anything?
So I see two members of West Central here. Anybody else from West Central? Okay, mine's are there, too. I just want to say thank you for hanging in there with us. We have waited, you have waited for this for a long, long time. This is the first, hopefully, of many movements in West Central. It's time. This money will be used for a planner to help look at infrastructure in West Central, to look at the plan, to work with the businesses in that area, to really start revitalizing West Central. And to Jesse and to Liz and all of you out there, you worked very hard for this, and I am so glad to see this moment come. So thank you.
All right, any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right. All right, let's go to ordinance 36356.
Ordinance C-36356, relating to the water department and water rates, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.04.2002 and 13.04.2012 of Chapter 13.034 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date.
All right, there's no public commentary on this. Essentially, this is adjusting for a situation where people in the past have just shut off their water for a month or two, and then we stopped charging them water service even though they could get it. But we have a new utility computerized system that's not working well for that. And so the water department requested that we make it clear that as long as your meter is working and we're supplying water to that site, that the water rates will be charged. And I can't remember the number, but was it like a thousand?
Thousand people.
Seven hundred fifty something, yeah. Okay, so it doesn't affect a lot of people, but it does affect some people. Is there any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'm going to oppose this tonight. I don't like government monopolies, and we kind of have a de facto one here. And really, it's the only way it can occur. But because we have one, I think we have to have some protections in place. And one would be, you know, to allow somebody to choose not to have service for a short or long period of time. And so I just don't think that it's right for us to mandate that service should always have to continue, and folks should have a choice. So I'll vote no.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Bingle, you had your intro.
I sure did, yeah. Yeah, and so just on this, you know, what it is, is that we didn't actually shut off the water to their house. We just stopped billing them in that time that they wanted. And so the water was still there. The city still carried the liability in those moments. And people can still have their water shut off if they'd like. It's just you have to actually shut it off at the source and not just disable the building. And so I'm going to be supporting this one tonight, because again, the city does carry liability so long as we're supplying water to that area. I think that you should pay for it, so.
Prepare to vote. All right, that passes six to one. All right, Madam Clerk, if I've calculated correctly, we're just down to our two ordinances.
Correct.
Correct. Why don't you read the title for, well, let me do some background, because this is a pretty unique situation. So most of you who are here know, we've been working on this issue of landlord-tenant improvements for many years, particularly for the last 18 months, particularly for the last three months. And through all the negotiations and listening sessions, over the weekend, we took essentially the last draft that was out there in city legal, divided it into two different ordinances. They didn't add anything in particular to them, but they... anything in particular to them, but they, they divided it into two. And the idea was to accomplish two things, make it a little more digestible, and then focus, there's kind of two areas. One area is the establishment of a rental registry and a $15 door fee that would focus on proactive code enforcement. And then, there were several other provisions of a landlord mitigation fund, a fund for tenant legal services and relocation, anti-retaliation, some duties for landlords as far as walkthroughs and record-keeping, and disclosing mold and things like that. So, we put it into two different ones. And so, what you see, if you looked on the packet, the language is pretty much the same, it's just divided into two. There were a few more very small, minor language tweaks that City Legal did as well. You're going to tell me, Ms. Allers, if someone wants to look at it online, they would check a link that they can find here?
Well, no, because the forum has closed. But I can definitely post the link to the Facebook page if you want.
Okay, that'd be great. City Council Facebook page, so you can, if you want to get into the words on it. But one of the things when we, so we substituted part of the ordinance for the bigger one, and that's C 36330. So, Ms. Fister's just going to read the title for that. But because we created an entire new ordinance, C 36336, Ms. Fister has to read that in its entirety because we did that without a lot of the three-day notice on that. So, you'll get to hear verbally the, the parts that aren't really the per-door fee, proactive code enforcement, and rental registry. So, with that, I'm going to let Ms. Fister read, oh, and we're going to take testimony for both. So, you can testify one time, and you can mention anything of either ordinances. We have 43 people signed up. You have up to three minutes. If you can use less than three minutes, your friends and neighbors will appreciate that. I am also going to do the same thing of call people up. So, when you hear your name, please come up so that we can get through it and, you know, hear from everybody. We really appreciate the, the great interest, not just for tonight, but throughout the months and years where people have been quite diligent in making their views known and sharing their lived experiences regardless of their perspective. But with that, I'll have you read the title of C 36330 and then the full 336.
Okay. Ordinance number C 36330, an ordinance establishing a local program for assisting landlords and tenants in Spokane, enacting a new chapter 10.57 to Division 2 of Title 10 and amending section 7.08.139, 8.01.160, 0.195, 270, and 8.02.026, excuse me, 8.02.0206 of the Spokane Municipal Code. And then, ordinance number C 36366, so we're reading it's entirety, an ordinance relating to landlord-tenant regulations, adopting new sections 10.57.080, 0.090, 100, 110, 120, 130, and 140 to Chapter 10.57 and enacting new sections 7.08.157 and 7.08.158 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Spokane desires to reduce the cost of background checks to tenants by supplying portable background checks at no cost to the landlord. And whereas the city of Spokane desires to utilize funds authorized under SMC Section 8.07(c) to fund the housing and housing-related services of tenant relocation and legal services for qualified tenants. And whereas current Washington law does not provide a civil remedy to violations of residential rental unit regulations, a municipal court other than for issues of habitability, and therefore, the only reasonable legal remedy for many provisions in the Spokane Municipal Code is a private right of action. A private right of action is created for specified violations of the residential rental code. And whereas the city of Spokane desires to utilize funds under SMC Section 8.07(c) to fund the housing-related services of rental property damage mitigation for those landlords that work with programs that provide housing support to low-income individuals. Now, therefore, the city of Spokane does ordain Section 1 that there are adopted new sections to Chapter 10.57 of the Spokane Municipal Code to read as follows. SMC 10.57.080, portable background and credit checks. SMC 10.57.090, residential rental property mitigation program. SMC 10.57.100, legal services and relocation program. SMC 10.57.110, landlord walkthroughs and inspections. SMC 10.57.120, disclosures. SMC 10.57.130, anti-retaliation protections. SMC 10.57.140, private right of action. Section 10.57.080, portable background and credit checks, a purpose and intent. Number one, the screening of a prospective tenant's rental history, financial history, and criminal background is a common aspect of renting residential real property and provides an important benefit to both landlords and tenants. Number two, while tenants usually pay fees associated with the screening each time they apply for a unit, state law requires that fees collected can only cover the actual cost of screenings performed. Multiple applications for rental housing currently require prospective tenants to pay multiple fees which can be burdensome to prospective tenants, especially in a tight rental market. Number three, the intent of this section is consistent with RCW 59.18.257, to support landlords getting the data they need to make an informed decision about a prospective tenant at no cost to the landlord and in compliance with state law, while ensuring that prospective tenants are not unduly burdened by the need to pay multiple background and credit check fees. B, portable background and credit check, checks program. Number one, the city of Spokane's Department of Code Enforcement is authorized to publish a request for qualifications hereafter RFQ from consumer reporting agencies that have the capability to provide certified portable background and credit checks. Number two, the contact, content of the background and credit report must comply with state and federal laws and housing requirements, including guidance from the federal government on criminal background checks, and will be decided by the Spokane City Council upon recommendation of advisory group that must include representatives from landlord, tenant, and social services housing organizations. Number three, all portable background and credit checks conducted under this section shall be valid for at least 90 days from the date of issuance. Number four, the city of Spokane and its agents shall have no right to access the information included in a portable background checked unless provided to them by the prospective tenant subject of the report. Number five, prospective tenants are responsible for paying the fee for the creation of the portable background and credit check, and landlords cannot be charged for it. Landlords cannot charge tenants an additional fee for accessing the check. Number six, landlords that accept a portable background check pursuant to RCW 59.18.257 subsection 1.4 may not charge a tenant for a second background and credit screening service. Number seven, nothing in this section restricts a landlord from asking a prospective tenant about their criminal credit or rental history or making a decision on whether or not to rent to an individual based on that history. Section 10.57.090, residential rental property mitigation program. A, the Department of Community Housing and Human Services is authorized to operate a rental property mitigation program which is intended to assist in the repair of residential rental properties that are damaged during a tenancy and where damage occurs through no fault of the landlord. B, the city's fund will be supplemental to any similar state or federal program and will only be used after the applicant has completed a timely and complete application for those funds. Exhausted the tenant's damage deposit and still has not been fully compensated for the damage. C, the Department of Community Housing and Human Services is authorized to establish public rules for the operation of the rental property mitigation fund and shall publish and accept public comment on such rules for 60 days prior to the effective day the rules for the program. D, landlords applying for funding from the rental property mitigation fund must meet the criteria established by the Community Housing and Human Services Department pursuant to subsection C of this section. Within a calendar year, dispersment of such funds shall prioritize assistance to landlords where a government, nonprofit-operated program or privately-operated program under government contract that provides housing support to low-income individuals referred the tenant to the landlord or provided a portion of the rent or damage deposit with remaining funding dispersed to all other qualifying applicants thereafter. E, the city may contract with another entity to administer its residential rental property mitigation program. Section 10.57.100, legal services and relocation program. A, city of Spokane is authorized to use monies from the Legal Services and Relocation Fund to contract with another entity to provide attorney services for landlord and tenant legal services and mediation costs with a focus on habitability and violations of the Chapter 59.18 RCW Residential Landlord-Tenant Act hereafter RLTA. The city investment would provide seed money for first year of salary and benefits for an attorney, reasonable litigation costs, including mediation fees. Legal fees from successful representation would be used to sustain, sustain the attorneys and associated costs for, for the long term. B, the city is further authorized to disperse monies from the Legal Services and Relocation Fund to provide immediate relocation funds to tenants living in rental units that are below the standards of habitability and likely to be able to recover relocation funds from their landlord, which will reimburse the fund. The city is also authorized to disperse monies from the Legal Services and Relocation Fund to landlords to assist with tenant removal or relocation. The attorney described in Section A shall establish an application review and appeals process for the relocation fund program. C, minimum program requirements. Number one, a program that focuses on pursuing legal remedies for rental housing units that clearly fall below standard of habitability defined in the Spokane Municipal Code and/or violate the RLTA in consultation with code enforcement. Two, a program that provides prompt relocation funds from city directly to the tenant once it appears to the attorney described in Section A that a landlord is more likely than not to be held liable under state law, and then collects from the landlord and any settlement funds as first priority, a reimbursement to the relocation funds advanced and any attorney fees that could be used to fund the attorney positions in the future. Three, a program that builds increased capacity for these services, including education and outreach. Four, services provided under this section may only be provided to individuals from households with incomes less than 400% of the federal poverty level. Section 10.57.110, landlord walkthroughs and inspections. A, prior to any rental occupancy, the landlord or owner or manager of residential rental real property shall self-inspect the unit, ensuring it meets the requirements of applicable building and housing codes impacting health, safety, and livability. B, the owner of residential rental real property shall make all necessary repairs to keep the premises in habitable condition as defined by the Spokane Municipal Code before a tenant may occupy the unit. C, any entity or individual operating rental housing shall maintain all move-in and move-out inspection records for at least three years. D, execution of any rental agreement shall act as certification by the landlord, owner, or manager of residential rental real property that all relevant state and municipal building and housing codes impacting health, safety, and habitability are met. Section 10.57.120, disclosures. A, prior to entering into a lease or rental agreement, the landlord, owner, or manager of residential rental real property must disclose to prospective tenants whether the unit has the history of mold, any remediation, and whether the landlord has been informed by past tenants of any health concerns related to mold. B, the landlord or owner or manager of residential rental real property must disclose to tenants within 10 days when a unit they are renting is part of a building or parcel that has been listed for sale. In the event that the property is sold, the landlord or owner or manager of residential rental real property must provide all known contact information for the new owners to the tenants. C, the landlord or owner or manager of residential rental real property must disclose any known history of methamphetamine manufacturing on the premises. Section 10.57.130, anti-retaliation protections. A, purpose and intent. Due to fears of retaliation, tenants may fear speaking up about housing habitability issues or organizing as tenants. State law provides protection against retaliation, and the city of Spokane intends for its code to provide additional protections. B, prohibition on retaliation. Number one, no landlord or owner or manager of residential rental real property in Spokane may intimidate any person because that person is engaging in activities designed to make other persons aware of or encouraging such other persons to exercise rights granted or protected by the fair housing laws or engaging in political speech or political organizing. Number two, no person may threaten any employer or agent with dismissal or an adverse employment and action or take such adverse employment action for any effort to assist in any person exercising the fair housing rights. Number three, for purposes of this section, fair housing laws and fair housing rights include the Federal Fair Housing Act, the Washington Law Against Discrimination, and Title 18 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Section 10.57.140, private right of action. A, any person or class of persons claimed to have been injured by a violation of section 10.57.020H, 10.57.110, 120, or 130 may commence a civil action in Superior Court, not later than three years after the occurrence of the alleged violation, to obtain relief with respect to such violation. A bond prevailing such aggrieved person may be awarded reasonable attorney's fees and costs and such other legal inequitable relief as appropriate to remedy the violation, including without limitation the payment of compensatory damages, a penalty, penalty of up to $500, and injunctive relief. B, if a landlord fails to comply with the requirements of section 10.57.020H, 10.57.110, 120, or 130, and such failure was not caused by the tenant, the tenant may terminate, terminate the rental agreement by a written notice pursuant to law. Section two, that there is enacted a new section 7.08.157 of the Spokane Municipal Code to read as follows. Section 7.08.157, residential rental property mitigation fund. A, there is established a special revenue fund entitled the residential rental property mitigation fund into which shall be paid 10% of fees from business registration that have at least one listed residential rental property. B, as provided in the annual budget, the residential rental property mitigation fund is appropriated to provide the payment of repairs of residential rental properties that are damaged during a tenancy where a government or nonprofit-operated program that provides housing support to low-income individuals referred the tenant to the landlord or provided a portion of the rent or damage deposit where damage occurs through no fault of the landlord, as established by SMC 10.57.080. The city council may also provide for additional revenues to be paid into such fund from time to time from any available funds of the city, including an initial investment of startup money. Section three, that there is enacted a new section 7.08.158 of the Spokane Municipal Code to read as follows. Section 7.08.158, legal services and relocation fund. A, there is established a special revenue fund entitled the legal services and relocation fund into which shall be paid 2% of all revenue collected pursuant to SMC 8.07(c) each year for five calendar years, 2023 to 2027, to seed the fund, and then it shall thereafter be maintained with 100% proceeds from some standard housing enforcement actions by the legal services and relocation program. B, as provided in the annual budget, the legal services and relocation fund is appropriated to provide for legal services and relocation funds arising out of rental units that fall below standards of habitability as established by SMC 10.57.070. The city council may also provide for additional revenues to be paid into such fund from time to time from any available funds of the city. That's it.
Very good. Thank you so much. I was asked by the reporter from the spokesman last week. He says, well, you guys keep making changes, you know, isn't that a problem? And I said, well, yeah, but that's because we keep listening to everybody. So, that is why there are so many changes. We've, we've taken a lot. Start calling people up. I just want to remind people that we're all neighbors in this city. And even though we have felt strongly and do feel strongly on this, please remember your fellow human beings here who also want to live in homes and have lives. And feel free to be as persuasive as you want with us about what, how you think the world should be. But I, I, I request that you not take things out on each other because you all are valuable to our community and to us, and you all bring a lot. And thanks for all for being here. And with that, we've got Dave Bilson to start, and then Rick Bowkuk, and then Robert Shaw. And again, go ahead and come up to the front row if you're not actually speaking, and I'll keep those threesomes going. And go ahead and tell us your name and where you live, and faster we can go, we might, we have a chance to be done at 9:30, just barely. People go for it. So, welcome, Dave.
Dave Bilson, I live in Logan neighborhood. I like to remind the landlords that they shouldn't raise the rent regarding anything that's passed or not passed tonight. They've already raised it 30% in my case, which is already paying for everything. And so, let's not raise the rent over this just because you have to get a business license. That's not worth raising the rent over. You've already done it. You're already taken over $1,500 a month or this year, extra. And so, that pays for all this. So, landlords, please don't raise the rent just because we get a few more rights like what happened last time. And by the way, I'm all in favor of this. It's very important. I found out from my neighbor, who I know, not from the landlord, that meth had been smoked in my apartment before I moved in. And I was not informed of it except by my neighbor. My landlord didn't say squat. The house was man-clean, not woman-clean. And so, I know they didn't scrub the walls. I know they didn't even clean the carpet because I had to bring a friend in to clean it. And so, landlords need to make more effort, at least my landlord does, because he hasn't done squat. I've put out $1,500 extra this year, and have I gotten $1,500 worth of service back? No. So, let's remember, you raised the rent, so now you got to do more for the apartments, folks. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Dave, being brief. Rick Bowkuk, then Robert Shaw, then Steve Wareham.
I think people should be asking, what's wrong with having stronger tenants' rights? There shouldn't be anything wrong with that. And there's two apartments down in the downtown area that they probably need to be, put some code enforcement on them. But I don't think they're going to do that, though, because they, there's about 50 Level 2 sex offenders in the downtown area, and they probably won't regulate the apartments that they're in, which they should. But if they do, they, those sex offenders probably will have to be moving somewhere else. So, I think that tenants' rights are really good, but some of these places that are what they call the slum lords, I think they should be dealt with because it's, it's terrible to have to be around that environment. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Robert Shaw, and then after Robert, Steve, and then Suzette McGoldrick. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Robert Shaw, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective on the problem of homelessness in Spokane. I've been a resident of Spokane County since 1999, and I have no affiliation with groups representing tenants, landlords, investors, or service providers. I'm a retired banker with over 35 years of experience in home finance and offer a different point of view that may help with this policy development. My perspective about housing and homelessness in Spokane is that we have a festering homeless problem because in part, we have a persistent housing unit shortage. Household growth has been and continues to be greater than unit growth. Because of Spokane's housing unit shortage, too many households struggle with the availability and the cost of shelter, and the worst of this impact falls on the most vulnerable of us. To reduce homelessness in Spokane, we must attract real estate investment capital and service management expertise to provide more shelter and specialized operations. Real estate financing is typically available when past performance can be documented, the proposed project has a strong likelihood of success, and sufficient equity capital is invested in the project. From a risk perspective, project cash flow is jeopardized by poor landlord-tenant conditions, so landlords, lenders expect effective management controls to prevent disruption. In conclusion, investors can buy, sell, or hold assets in many forms in different places. Spokane must demonstrate support for investment capital and specialized operations to attract more resources for the homeless. It is my hope that this public policy facilitates stable and sustainable landlord-tenant conditions and sends a signal to capital providers that Spokane welcomes and encourages more investment. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Steve Wareham, and then Suzette McGoldrick, and then Steve Corker.
Hello, my name's Steve Wareham. I want to talk as a tenant first and then as a landlord second. As a tenant, there's RSRW regs out there that says, "If a landlord's not fixing a unit, you can take steps and get bids and then pay for that to get it done and deduct it from the rent." So there's already stuff in the state legislator to do that, so why are we adding more to it? I did that personally as a property that I rent for one of my clients that I do accounting for, and I was able to get the landlord to do the improvements that they should have done, but I had to go through those steps, so I would recommend that the Tenants Association educate their tenants on how to do that procedure. Second, I'd like to, the predecessor, supply and demand. Increase the supply, then the price of housing will go down, simple as that. Getting a city attorney to sue landlords, and he's going to make his money to fund his budget for next year by suing landlords, that's making a hostile environment for landlords. And so this shirt, Star Trek shirt, red shirt, I might not make it.
We need you to speak into the microphone, thank you.
Well, this is how us small landlords feel. We might not make it between what the state is imposing on us and what the city's imposing on us. Our mom-and-pop landlords might not make it, and we're the ones that supply most of the small, or most of the low-income housing. And when you drive the mom-and-pop landlords out of business, you're going to lose low-income housing. I remember before COVID, you said you wanted 20% low-income housing, you only had 11, and I bet that number's far less than 11 after the landlords that left during COVID. I know, I talked to a lot of landlords, and there are some that are holding on by a shoestring, and they're like, "What's the straw that's going to break the camel's back?", where they say, "I'm done, I'm going to sell my property and leave." When that landlord leaves, they bought their property 10, 20 years ago, so just, for example, the unit that I just bought this summer, I paid three and a half times what the previous landlord paid for it, and because they didn't do all the maintenance on it, I had to put $80,000 into this duplex to get it up to the level what I would rent out. And so out of my current inventory, I have 75% of my units that are rented at below what Section 8 would pay. And so, but my new unit, because I had to put so much money into it, I'm going to have to rent that one for the market rate, so that unit left the low-income housing area because I can't make the mortgage payment, the interest payment, insurance, all the upkeep on it with the money that I had to invest in it to buy it and improve it. And then, I got more time.
Five seconds.
Okay.
Thanks for coming down, Steve. Suzette McGoldrick, then Steve Corker, and then Ali Appelis.
I could have given him a few seconds. Welcome, thank you for having me. I wanted to mention a couple things, basically for better code enforcement in cases of problem landlords. It seems to be the big picture of what's happening right here, as we're trying to make sure that, and everybody agrees with that, nobody wants a bad landlord. No one wants to be a bad guy, but there are some bad guys out there, and there's ways to remedy that, like Steve had mentioned. There are laws already with the Washington State Tenant Act in place to take care of that, and it's been in place for years. I'm a mortgage, I'm a managing broker in the real estate field, 30 years, I have a lot of rentals, and I just wanted to talk about this FICA score business. So we want to encourage, you want to encourage, the city government wants to encourage landlords to take on, quote, "less attractive tenants." That's one of the big things that you're suggesting. And a pared-down version of that would be, you know, I mean, how would you survive if you were a landlord and you couldn't get the actual tenant's background? It's a real difficult business as it is, and if you get a tenant to move in and you just have to take the security deposit in increments and are compliant with these things, of course, when it fails, if it does fail, you could lose your business. I mean, you're done, and you're going to sell the houses, the per-door fee, you know, that's going to be sent to the tenant. I mean, no landlords are going to pay all that, and then programs like, you guys say it, they're funded by the landlord, but they're really not. They're funded by the tenants. I mean, who are we kidding? All these fees are going to be transferred, you know, directly to the tenants, and they have one word to say, tenants, affordability. They are interested in affordability, and we try to provide that for them, at least my peers do. Anyway, I just don't think it's fair to dupe them, thinking that they're going to get all these things for free, because they're not. It just doesn't work that way. I don't want to go under with my rentals. I've already had a person that I really respect tell me, "Maybe you need to sell your rentals and just do something different." I'm 30 years invested in this, and I don't want to do that, but I sure don't like all these regulations. I'm tempted to hire this little girl right here to handle my stuff. You didn't know that, did you, Des? But anyway, you know, you almost need to be an attorney. My standard of care is that of a competent attorney in my field. I have all those credentials, and I'm going to be struggling with all these new things. We've got President Biden, he's got regulations he's bringing down, we've got the Washington Landlord Tenant Act, and now we've got the city council. Wow, you know, why don't you just do a 1-800-BAD-LANDLORD line? And like your mayor said, they can call up and turn them in. You get a few calls and go visit them.
Thanks so much for coming down. Steve Corker, Ali Appelis, and then Salvador Reinos.
One thing that we all have in common is that both tenants and landlords want more housing, and we need it not only for the needs of our citizens, but we need it for the needs of our community. We are anywhere from 30, 25,000 to 30,000 housing units short, and they are not going to be built overnight, and any public policy has to guarantee that we keep as many people in their homes as we possibly can. I think about 85% or 90% of renters pay the rent on time, are responsible tenants, and make landlords very happy. And I think of the 4,000 to 5,000 landlords, that 90% of them fulfill their obligations. Some were challenged with older properties, but oftentimes those older properties, particularly in Spokane, have resulted in keeping the cost of housing low. It's not just the private sector, and you'd need 97% of the housing that comes out of us, has to be a part of the solution. But we have to deal with the realities of poverty, and when dealing with the homeless, our health district has said, 40% of those people deal with mental challenges, medical issues, another 20% deal with drugs. These are human beings, and we have to keep the humanity in what we're doing. And when you implement this public policy, realize that it's going to take us probably seven to 10 years to build the housing, to bring market conditions down, and we need to do everything in implementing those policies to make sure we keep people in their homes. What bothers me about this, this ordinance doesn't build one house, and this ordinance doesn't provide $1 of rental assistance, and quite frankly, that's what we need, not policing, challenge tenants. You know who the bad landlords are, we've given you that list year after year, and you haven't had the resources to go after them. Public policy requires us to work together. These are human beings out here that are facing unbelievable challenges, and if we take the humanity out of it, we're not going to solve any problem. I think sitting here and attacking individual tenants or individual landlords won't solve a damn thing, it won't build a single house. It's the humanity, and passing public policy like this as fast as we can is not the quick solution. Yes, it's been six years, but the first time that ordinance came up, and you know what? It's going to take another six years to solve this problem, and Spokane has done better with it than most cities. Our rents are still below the national average, but I keep asking, what in this ordinance is really going to keep rents down and build more housing? That's an observation, not a criticism. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Ali Appelis, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. Is Ali here? All right. Salvador Recinos, and after Salvador, Jacqueline Stroh, and then Holly Elmer.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Salvador Recinos. I am a Spokane County resident. I am a tenant educator for the Tenants Union of Washington State. I have rented most of my life, and all of my immediate family continues to rent. I have spent over a decade in public health. I was a combat medic for the United States Army for eight years and worked in the emergency room as an ER tech for over a decade. Through ABA home loan, I now have a mortgage, and I am also a small housing provider, and I support the passage of both ordinance C36330 and C3366. I believe strong tenant protections save lives, and that is why I support funding code enforcement. Last week, I spoke with a family that were tenants who lost their homes to a fire because none of the alarms were working. Were you aware that in Washington, the residential code, WAC51-51-0303.10, requires a habitable room to maintain a minimum room temperature of 68 degrees Fahrenheit during cold weather? To be honest, I didn't know this residential code until the city, a city of Spokane tenant, a mother who could not maintain her house warm enough for her twin babies called the Tenants Union. Despite paying up to $750 monthly in heating utility costs, the most they could heat up their homes for their babies was 60 degrees Fahrenheit. After months of no communication from the housing provider or the property management, they paid out, they paid out of pocket for an assessment that stated the heating issues were likely due to inadequate insulation and improperly sized heating system. This is why I support periodic and cost-based inspections. Code enforcement know these standards. We need to fund them to keep our city, our children, and our elderly healthy. I urge you to pass these ordinance, these ordinance for their tenant protections, and strong tenant protections save lives. To be clear, these ordinance do not create any new standards of habitability, building codes, or regulations about building safety. The relevant changes in the code enforcement sections are primarily focused on punishing non-complianters. This ordinance actually provides code enforcement with more funding and resources to hire three more code enforcement inspectors. I remind the city council to keep in mind the needs of ADA tenants and tenants that English is their second language. Every day that housing rights and tenant protections are delayed is another day housing rights and tenant protections are denied. Thank you, city council members, for the important work that you do.
Thanks, Salvador, for coming down. Jacqueline Stroh, and then Holly Elmer, and then Frances Peterson.
Hello, I am Jacqueline Stroh, and one specific part of this ordinance would force existing landlords to update their homes to comply with current code. And as stated earlier, a large percentage of rentals in Spokane are dated homes, including ours. We have a four-bedroom, two-bath home that is 80 years old, and we are diligent in keeping everything in working order, comfortable, and safe for our tenants. We are not against public safety, but if we were forced to enact this ordinance, we would have to hire contractors and buy building materials to update our home. As many of you know, contractors have been booked out months, and building supplies are expensive, and it would only get worse if the demand were to grow. This would make it impossible for us to bring our home up to code in the short time allotted. We would also need to, excuse me, we would also need the family to vacate the home during these renovations. The family that lives in our home has four children, and their closest relatives live in Southern California, so where would they go and who's supposed to cover the cost for their displacement while we are doing these renovations? This would be the same for hundreds, if not thousands, of other families in our community of Spokane. Since we only own one home, we do not have the resources to update it in the time needed, and if we did, we would need to significantly increase the rent we charge this family to accommodate these updates. Because our home is older, we are able to keep the rent manageable to the families and not charge right off the production line prices, and this is a common occurrence with properties all over Spokane. There's been an ongoing housing crisis, and if this ordinance is passed, many landlords will be forced to sell their homes because they can't keep up with the demand, and if they're one of the few that can, rent prices will go through the roof, and no one has the ability to survive the drastic rent increases that will come from it. Also, most families that rent cannot afford to buy homes with current prices and interest rates. I mean, even us, I mean, current prices and interest rates, who can buy a home nowadays? So where will people go, and what options would these families have? With all of that being said, how is this ordinance, you know, supposed to help? All it will do is continue to cripple families financially, further the housing deficit, and create more homelessness. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacqueline. Holly Elmer, and after Holly, Frances, and then Justice Forall. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Holly Elmer, and I manage my family's six rentals. I was able to speak at the last town hall meeting we had, and Mr. Beggs, you weren't there, and so as a neighbor, I want to respectfully disagree with you that you have, that the council has really included a landlord association. I joined the landlord association to be a good landlord, to follow the rules, the regulations, to have leases that were provided by or written by the attorney that we have so that I could do everything I could do to be a good landlord. So it's not such an advocacy that we're supposed to be horrible for tenants, because just like the tenants know there's good landlords, well, there's good tenants. So I guess the problem that I'm having is you shut us out during COVID. I think this needs to be delayed so that we can have some really open discussions and have more hearings. That being said, I have seven doors, six rentals, but seven doors, and in the last six years, I renovated all of them, and I put extensive money, no distributions for seven years, extensive money in our reserves to do this. We're broke now. My homes are 1895 to 1912. These are very old homes. They were all built by immigrants when codes didn't really probably exist as well, and there's some things that are probably still out of code, and you don't, I don't know what you have for grandfather, what you're going to grandfather in and what you're not going to grandfather in, and that's kind of upsetting. So I feel like if you can't support the laws that are here right now for the tenants, because we want the slumlords turned in just like you do, just like all the tenants do, we want them turned in. So if we can't, you know, if you, with the current laws that exist, which are huge for the tenants, if they cannot figure out a way, and you can't figure out a way to get all these horrible landlords out, then how is this new law going to do it? Just by going into homes? I think it's going to make just a deficit to the good landlords. So I think it's something that I feel like, you know, the tenants behind me don't understand what we put out. what we put out for these houses and what we put out to be a good landlord. So anyway, thanks.
Thanks for coming down, Holly. Frances Peterson, and then Justice Forall, and then Michelle Pappas. Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Exelon, put all my stuff here. Well, I do, I had several speeches, and then the meetings were canceled, and then some changes. But, so I might have time to read the last one that I said I wasn't going to speak here, but then some changes. But I want the tenants to know that I'm a good landlord. Our tenants like my husband and I. These are all the rules that we as landlords, ordinances, COVID rules, eviction rules, we don't have the money to evict. And it just goes on and on, and it's very time consuming. So we do understand where the tenants who are not being taken care of are coming from, but you must understand where landlords must also be taken care of. Their properties are valuable, even if they're not worth a hundred thousand. So I'm just going to read this. I'm very nervous, so bear with me. So I want the tenants to hear what I have to say here, because it's a little bit about my husband and a little bit about a Marine. Okay, so we know there's good and bad law tenants, but the city of council and code enforcement will be taking away my job. It's my independence and the hard work of my husband of fifty years of his life. My eighteen as a landlady. It was my husband's 401 that made it possible to buy the rental. Jeez, so he could retire, have a retirement income. He's seventy-two. He's in the audience. So I really didn't care to work for the city of Spokane or code enforcement, but I'm willing to help. We are members of the landlord association. We have all the forms available, as well as Washington State legislature. I was on the phone with code enforcement well over an hour after seeing the news regarding the Marine vet receiving three deficiencies in one day. As code enforcement explained to me, the fourteen days notice to the vet or comply. The Marine statement was, or go homeless. How is this to help the Marine? I believe this ordinance is all about the homeless and fair housing, but we don't have the answers as landlords. We help where we can. We are good, hardworking landlords. Cut me off when you have to. Landlords with-
You've got thirty seconds.
A tenant of five years who does not want to leave our home. So we intend to sell our home in the city and search for a new place for our tenant. Our tenant and our husband are very hardworking and capable of fixing and repairing whatever is needed, but it looks like we will have no choice. My suggestion to code enforcement was how about we call for an appointment on a three-year basement for updates, and then you can leave us be. Quite frankly, you've imposed enough rules and regulations on us landlords. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Frances.
Sorry for the-
That's fine. Justice Forall, then Michelle Pappas, and then James Earl. Welcome.
My name is Justice Forall, Spokane resident and renter. These ordinances are necessary for basic accountability from our landlords to preserve housing for tenants. It is a responsibility to house another human being. All humans deserve habitable living conditions. If you cannot handle the responsibility of being a landlord, do not be a landlord. We need transparency, and all predatory practices or predatory behavior will continue. This includes rent, how people apply for housing, and the conditions they live. These landlords say they will take the door fee out on renters. You took COVID out on renters. You took inflation out on renters. Landlords take everything from and out on renters, with renters nothing to show for it, but the trauma of an exploitative relationship. Because there is no rent stabilization for Spokane. Housing is a right, not a commodity, and our, and landlords are the direct cause of homelessness. Of course, the low fifteen-dollar cost associated with per unit, you can guarantee they'll take it out on us, because they always do. Without the start to real tenant protections, we will continue to be exploited. Spokane has had the highest rent increase in the country in 2022, so be surprised when they don't penalize the working class and the historically oppressed. The fifteen-dollar per unit will be an excuse to gouge us more, and what should be a one-dollar twenty-five increase a month to rent. But this is why we need rental protections. This is why we need rent stabilization, because the greedy mouth doesn't know when it's full. Something landlords and renters should be mad about is how this ordinance has taken five years, shifting from reasonable agreements to yelling matches hosted by city council. Let's be honest, all of these testimonies are for naught. They have already decided how to vote. They will, they have split this ordinance into two, because city council and the mayor need to save face, because there's an election season coming up, and they need to score those political points. This is barely tenant protections. This is groundwork for building a better future for fifty percent of our population, though. We should be mad about how this ordinance has not been cleared to the public. We should all be mad about the major changes during the drafting phases. We should all be mad that this basic foundation has taken five years and stripped the rights and responsibilities agreed upon by both landlords and tenants, for both landlords and tenants. We need an honest dialogue about the future for Spokane's children and young adults with these exploitative rent costs. We need to continue to grow as community and reshape and reestablish how we view housing, because we are not headed towards a bright future but a bleak one. Let's get some metrics on the books. Let's get real renters' rights. And the only ethical way to rent is to rent to own. Thank you.
Thanks, Justice. Michelle Pappas, welcome, after Michelle James Earl, and then Joe Zamora.
Hello, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Michelle Pappas, and I am a Spokane resident. Four years ago, my son and I found ourselves living out of our car while I worked two jobs. All of our belongings were put in a storage unit, and that's how we survived. But we were really lucky, and we received a rapid rehousing grant. Unfortunately, our problems were incredibly far from over. We moved into the cleanest and safest looking unit available, and I searched and searched. But once we lived there, we found that mold was growing on, began to grow on every surface of the house. There was mold under our kitchen sink, which had, it was missing flooring. There was mold in the corner, every corner of the house. The bathroom was completely infested with mold, as there was no vent installed. Every time that my partner entered our home for two years, I watched him become violently This was within minutes of him entering the home. And of course, we did everything in our power to quell the mold, but the walls needed to be removed to fix the rotting lumber. And clearly, that was not something within my power. When we asked our neighbors, they all knew of the presence of the mold. They knew of what had started it. They knew how long it had been going on. But we were never, we were, it was never addressed, it was never cleaned. I was told to get bleach. I, I know today that there is someone living in that unit that has a small child, that is being exposed to the same things that we were exposed to for two years. I also know that by sharing my story, I have found that my story is not at all unique, that it is consistent, that it happens to far too many of our community members. Passing this will allow myself and others to heal from the mental and physical anguish of living in substandard housing. We moved, and my son's grades improved for no reason other than the fact that we had secure and stable housing that was safe. I am here tonight to care for our community and to urge you to vote yes on this ordinance. Please pass this ordinance so our communities can begin to thrive. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. James Earl, then Joe Zamora, then Madison Kleinkoff.
Evening. My name is James, and I'm a Spokane resident as well. And hearing some squirming and everything, some uneasiness from some landlords, which is good, because we need accountability in the city. We need so much accountability that what's going on right now is a, I'm going to drop a triple D on y'all. Ready for this one? Discriminatory double deposit. Currently, you've got landlords that are hiding behind a computer screen. Oh, they got gaps in, they got a rental gap. Double deposit. Oh, um, you don't have, like, this happened in 2011. Double deposit. But why? You're not given any reasons why. And let's all please take a look at the new Washington and Wolf Apartments. Really need some help. Like, have y'all been in there for more than an hour? And I'm not talking the dog and pony shows that, you know, no. Like, walk in there. So, uh, we don't need the double deposits. Another thing that's happening, too, that's along the lines of discrimination, is apparently it's okay to turn in an application. Okay, cool. We need two hundred dollars, we need a two-hundred-dollar deposit to hold the place while we do a background check. I just found out today that a lot of landlords need education on deposits. A lot of them. Because a lot of them are not aware that once, if you ask for a deposit, it has to go into a trust, or an account, or an escrow, and has to sit there until the tenant moves out. But do the landlords know that? No. Landlords need education on that. Because otherwise, I'm just going to report everyone that I don't see where my, where my deposit is going to. This also, like, if you have the equal housing opportunity thing on there, you better be on top of your stuff. Because I'm going to call y'all for discrimination, discrimination the first time I see it. Oh, and also, one hundred twenty-seven times, I heard somebody say we've got four thousand landlords in Spokane. I don't know if that's true or not. If so, wow. That comes out to about four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, which would be great to go into a fund to make repairs that the landlords, like, want to get done. Because it seems like a lot of landlords are afraid to get repairs done. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Joe Zamora, welcome. And after Joe's, Madison Kleinkoff, and then Jerry Bishop.
Good evening, Mr. Vice, Mr. President and council members.
Can you pull that microphone down?
I am, I am Joe Zamora, and I live in the county, just outside the city limits. And this whole thing brought a few points to mind that I just made some notes. And while I do agree with safe and livable housing, why is it the government's duty to foster affordable housing? Now, if a property is mortgaged, will that affordable property rent make the payment? This doesn't cover the whole rental market, of course, but think about it. If it isn't, it may cause the property owner to sell his property. There goes housing. Another facet is that the property owners are to provide, among other items, a voter It isn't the landowner's responsibility to see the tenants vote. It is the tenant's duty to vote. Now, that is a duty. Plus, how many tenants will use the material regardless as, as to how it's provided? It calls for personal responsibility. And finally, how is it the government thinks that it knows how to take care of everybody? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Madison Kleinkoff, and Jerry Bishop, and then Alexis Teneska.
Hello. My name is Madison Kleinkoff. I go by Ellis. I have been a citizen of Spokane for going on four years now. The rise in cost of limit, the, excuse me, the rise in cost of living has been astronomical, to say the least. Many Spokaneites, like myself, have lived the experience of being severely red burdened, along with that, have experienced the fear of being a few bad weeks from facing eviction and potentially homelessness. When I first moved here, it was into a house where rent was split six ways. Even then, it took months for me to save enough for moving costs when I needed to leave that situation. This ordinance will lay the foundation for protections that will be a boon to the renters of Spokane. Tenant rights and protections are absolutely essential to the people of Spokane. Everyone deserves to make a living wage, but landlords should not be allowed to make a killing exploiting renters who have no alternatives. Not knowing my rights has jeopardized my living situation many times. If you are a landlord who thinks a business license fee and a fifteen-dollar-a-unit charge is an unreasonable ask, you should probably switch professions. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Jerry Bishop, and then Alexis Teneska.
Hi, there. Thank you, guys, for having us all here. Appreciate your patience with us. I am, so when my wife and I were first starting out together, we started a nonprofit. And to start it, we were working with the poor. And we were so poor, we lived in our friend's kitchen, like, we slept on the floor of the kitchen. Then we graduated up to an apartment in a burned-out building. We were the only tenants in that building. It was quite an experience. So I understand how difficult it can be to be homeless. I became, I mean, I'm very fortunate in that I served in the U.S. military, and so as a veteran, I could buy a house with no money down. That really helped me in stepping up to being a landlord. But I did want to mention a couple of things. One is that a few years ago, I went to the building department to try, we wanted to turn one of our properties into a duplex. At the time, the city council was so restrictive on zoning that it wasn't allowed. In retrospect, I know you now would allow that property to be turned into a duplex, but we chose to just renovate it and sell it. And so there goes two rental units, if you like. So I hope you won't be, in retrospect, disappointed in yourselves for not considering thoughtfully the impact of this on homelessness. I see it as a, as a poor tax, because landlords aren't going to, they're not going to absorb the costs, they're going to pass them on, or they're going to renovate their properties. In the past, I would, we had a relationship with a homeless shelter, and we would take in homeless people and give them a place to live in one of our houses and not charge market rent, and we wouldn't charge deposit and that sort of thing. But it was a very, very difficult thing to do. We found it was too stressful. Now, I renovate our properties, and what we give our tenants is a basket, and it has granite countertop cleaner, stainless steel appliance cleaner, and ceramic top cleaner. In other words, we went kind of upgrade. And it did eliminate the poor from our housing stock, and it made it easier on us, less stressful. And I think what you may inadvertently do is inspire other landlords to raise up the quality of their housing stock and eliminate some of their low-income tenants. If I were to try to rent one of my properties for the rent I used to charge when they were rough, it would be, it would just not work. Like, I would think I was, I was in a bidding war with someone. Sorry. I'm done. Thank you for your patience, though.
Thanks for coming down. And next is Alexis Teneska, and after Alexis, we're going to take a little break. Welcome, Alexis.
Thank you. Why, hastelholt, is in Kai'lukskuis, Skowalwot, Lash, Iskuis, Ilonyapi, Chen, Alexis. I just introduced myself in Okanagan Salish, and that is one of the original languages of this land. And I just want to remind us all where we are now in this time and this place. This is the ancestral homeland of several tribes, but most prominently, of course, the Spokane. And it has always been within our traditions to be caretakers of not only the land, but everyone in our community. So it's very hard to sit here and listen to people arguing against anything that would be caretaking of their neighbors and human beings who live here. And I, I wanted to take a moment to also remind city council- And I, I wanted to take a moment to also remind city council of some of the biases that may be happening right now in this moment, as there are people who have very important perspectives, who are not always here, or are not always talking to you. You have a lot of meetings with people who have, you know, tend to have salaries, and a lot of people don't. You tend to be in spaces where there's just a, you know, there's a lot of classism here, and there's a divide between classes. So, I wanted to remind you that there's a lot that you're not hearing. And we're not just making decisions tonight for us, for ourselves, for our businesses, for our bank accounts. We are also making decisions for every single child who lives here in this area. Children are not capable of providing for themselves. We have to do it. We have to be the adults. We have to make the hard decisions. And these decisions will impact generations to come as well. So, we're not just making decisions for right here and right now, for who's here in this room, for who we're usually talking to on a regular basis, for who we feel comfortable around. We're making decisions on the behalf of a lot of people who are not here. A lot of people who have been living so rough that they don't even feel comfortable walking into this room. It may not even really feel, it might take a long time for them to feel even comfortable living in a home, you know?
Thanks, Alexis, for coming down. All right, so, we're gonna take about a 10-minute break. But before we do that, I just wanna, when we come back, we're gonna try to reach Ryan McKinster on video and Robert Hewitt phone. Next people in person are gonna be Tisha Goodman and Cindy Zapataki. And I want to... Is Officer Workman here?
He was in the back.
He was in the lobby last night.
All right. I'll get him when we come back. All right, so, yeah, let's be actually talking by 8:25. Thanks.
8:25?
Good God, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Hello, everybody.
I was trying to tell you. I was trying to tell you.
Welcome back. Before I officially gavel us back into order, I wanted—
Tell them the nine o'clock.
—to get the attention of my council members. Council members. Before I gavel us back into order, I wanted to ask you all to join me in a round of applause to Officer Workman, who has been protecting us and keeping order for a long time. He is about to retire. This is his last meeting. Thank you.
Are you sure you want to stop doing this? That was just a very strong guess.
All right. Okay, we're back into order. Regular council rules. And as I mentioned before the break, we're going to take—we've got one person on video and one person by phone. And the person on video is Ryan McKinster. And I see your icon up there, Ryan. Can you hear us?
Ryan, you can unmute yourself and turn your video on if you'd like, and then you can begin.
Good evening, Council President Brakes and members of the council. For the record, Ryan McKinster, I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Washington Multifamily Housing Association. We represent over 4,000 members in about 315,000 units statewide. In Spokane alone, we represent over 124 properties and 12,000 units. I'm pointing that out, that us, along with RHA, STE's organization, and others, we represent a majority of the properties, especially managed properties in the state. I think that's important to notice. We are all in the room. You've heard many tenants today about some very nightmare stories, which are heart-wrenching. But I will point out, I'm willing to bet, none of those landlords are in the room. We are here to be part of the solution. We're trying to be part of the solution. And those landlords that are not here, that are causing those negative actions, if they were here, if they cared, if they were going to comply, they would be here. I believe they are. You don't choose to be part of the association or hire property management to break the law or be a bad landlord. It would be counterintuitive. Having said that, thank you, council, once again, for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to just note for a few things, some concerns we have for this. But before I get there, I'd like to say thank you for a few things. I would like to say thank you to Councilors Cathcart and Stratton for hearing our concerns and allowing avenue for all stakeholders to provide input on the proposed ordinance. And that the council in general hordes the ready to allow for such conversations. It was truly productive. I would also like to thank Council President Brakes for considering the concerns of many stakeholders and making many changes in the ordinance to address lawless concerns across the spectrum. It truly does mean a lot to us and the effort you put into this. However, some of our concerns with the proposal still exist. Number one, with the registration— registering—excuse me—registering units does not seem to address the perceived problem we have heard of. Just as the current practice is, the good actors will follow law and the bad actors will not. The city already knows the problem, landlords, and if they don't, you've heard of about 20 of them already today from your tenants. This will just add additional costs for tenants during a time when this council has stated there's an affordability crisis. As I and others have stated many times, what is the problem we are trying to solve? If it's housing affordability, this package will not do it. In fact, it may only exacerbate the problem by limiting housing stock through small owner rental conversions, as well as disincentivizing producing new housing. The only answer to our housing crisis today is supply, which unfortunately takes time and also unfortunately this ordinance does not address. If it is intended to help those who have trouble finding housing, either poor rental or credit history, or a problematic criminal background record, I don't believe this will help either. The reason prospective tenants are applying and paying for multiple background checks is because unfortunately, they are applying for units they do not qualify for, hoping, I guess, and I understand—I've been there—that somehow they will eventually qualify. Unfortunately, I don't believe this program will address that problem either. Our members will continue to use their proven background check methods, and unfortunately, these individuals will still fail to qualify. I would like to point out just two other parts of the proposal in the closeout. Although promoted as a benefit to housing providers, the Residential Rental Property Mitigation Fund is so prescriptive in its use—
Ryan, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're done with your time for tonight, so—
Okay, no problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, and thanks for hanging out with us and appearing. We appreciate hearing from you. Next, Robert Hewitt by phone. So, Robert, if you want to hit star three. All right. Robert, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Council President and council members, thank you. My name is Robert Hewitt, a resident of Spokane, and I am the racial equity and network manager for the Greater Spokane Progress. Greater Spokane Progress is a collaborative network united to build political strength and equity in our community. GSP supports organizing efforts of aligned organizations, coalitions, IPAC, and other impacted communities throughout our region. I'm also a tenant, and I'm here to ask the council to vote yes on the tenant protection ordinance tonight. It is critical to get these common sense measures in place to regulate housing and to not defer this further, as it was already tabled and delayed in the past numerous times. The world has drastically changed since December of 2019, when this was first tabled, and renters need these protections even more so now than they did then. We urge you to vote yes on these protections. After reading through the ordinance, I like that it addresses some of the ambiguity and the frustrating aspects that renters face during the rental process. As I mentioned a moment ago, being a tenant myself and going through that process and trying to find a place to live, I have firsthand experience with some of these issues that the ordinance addresses. This ordinance lays a foundation for making the rental application process smoother for both tenants and landlords. The universal background check directly addresses the financial burden of paying multiple fees while applying for housing, something that may seem like a small fee but adds up quickly. Making sure that there's an enforceable-based standard when it comes to managing rental units, when it comes to the aspects of the ordinance, like the business license, rental unit registration, code enforcement, and inspection, will also be a huge win for tenants in terms of safety and habitability. There is a shortage of rentals nationwide, and Spokane is no different. Fifty percent of the population of Spokane are renters, and 50% of those renters are severely rent burdened. These tenant protections are the first step towards codifying housing as a human right. This ordinance would bring us closer to having equitable access to affordable housing for our entire community. In the midst of a housing crisis and when national attention on related issues like Camp Hope and the longstanding historic and systemic racism in this region, while this ordinance primarily addresses housing security, it will also address the lack of racial equity and the glaring racial wealth gap in the context of housing within our region. Passing this ordinance will be the start of undoing Spokane's long and shameful history of racially motivated housing laws, which continue to shape our neighborhoods to this day. Once again, we urge you to vote yes and start the process of moving Spokane into a new era of regulating rental housing to the much needed benefit of the underrepresented and marginalized members of our community. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. All right, so now we're back to in-person. We have Tisha Goodman, followed by Cindy Zapataki, and then Maxim Johnston. If you all want to come on and be ready and on deck. Welcome, Tisha.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and council members, for providing me the opportunity to testify tonight. My name is Tisha Goodman, and I'm a housing provider with over 600 units in the city of Spokane. And while I appreciate that housing providers were finally provided an opportunity to be heard, I believe it was too little, too late. I appreciate the efforts many of—several of the council members made to hear the concerns and suggestions that housing providers provided, but I am concerned that several of you did not take the opportunity to participate in those discussions. And I wonder why. If solving the issues related to affordable housing, housing safety, and homelessness is your goal, why were you not interested in hearing from the people who provide housing? When we were finally offered an opportunity to truly be heard and really get down and discuss issues, we filled rooms and we provided very specific suggestions and answers to the problems that exist today. As Steve Corker said, "The only thing that will solve our housing crisis is more housing." If you continue to make the business of providing rental housing harder through more government oversight, it will only drive current and future housing providers to invest elsewhere and continue to drive rental prices up. In reviewing the proposed version of the ordinance, it's very concerning to me that you're presenting this ordinance as tenant protections, as I believe there is very little thought that has gone into real solutions for tenants. And because of time, I'm going to give you one specific example. So, the portable background and credit check. You say your goal is to streamline this process and make it more affordable through obtaining rental housing through this portable background check. So generally, the cost of a credit check and a background check is $35 to $65. I think the real reason that you're being told this is unaffordable is that some applicants are just unable to pass these background checks. And whether it be credit or whatever that problem is, but they keep applying for properties without understanding the rental criteria that is set by the various properties. Let's remember, we're housing providers, and our job is to put people into homes. We want to get people into homes. So my suggestion would be consider tenant education programs. Educate tenants on what the rental criteria says and how to better improve their credit histories so that they can get into housing. The other thing I would say is let's incentivize housing providers to rent to high-risk tenants by finding ways to offset the risk. There are people sitting behind me talking about the fact that they put high-risk tenants into their homes. Let's incentivize more of that so we can get people into homes that are not going to pass my credit checks for my properties. So this is just one example of finding solutions to incentivize providing opportunities for people who are at risk to get into housing. The housing crisis we are facing in Spokane is a serious issue, and the business of providing housing is very complicated. But if you take the time to work with housing providers, I believe you would find solutions, real solutions. Thank you.
Tisha, thanks for coming down. Cindy Zapataki, and then Maxim Johnston, and then Anton Villone.
Welcome to City Council. Thank you for listening to us and for giving us a chance to speak. I had a testimony prepared, but of course, when I got here tonight, I discovered that the ordinance had been split into two pieces, and I had not even read it yet. So many of us here have not even read this. And I think that's very unfair of you to do and not make copies available. I thought even when I walked in the door, copies would be available, but they were not. So we don't even know what we're looking at, let alone what to talk about tonight. I want the people out there to know about how it felt coming down here tonight. I walked up to the building and was met with some very hostile signs and some very angry hostile people. They don't know me, but they were showing signs that said I was a greedy landlord and didn't care about my tenants. It's very intimidating, even along with the nasty looks that they shoot at you. I don't—you probably can't see what they're doing, but when the landlords come up to speak, then these people stand up and they turn their backs on us to show how much they hate us and how angry they are. And that's very intimidating. I can't say I feel real safe in this room tonight, and I'm really glad there's a policeman here to protect me so I can make it to my car. I don't think this is helpful. We were told that we could not bring signs down and call people names and write things on the signs, but these people are allowed by the council to wear shirts. So really, they're wearing their signs into the room with their shirts. This doesn't make a good environment where you feel welcome, where you feel safe to come down here, which is probably why a lot of landlords didn't come here tonight. If it really is your desire to come up with solutions, this really isn't the way to do it, with a bunch of hostile, angry people standing behind us, trying to intimidate and make us fearful. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Maxim Johnston, and then Anton Villone.
Maxim had to go.
Maxim. Okay, Anton. And after Anton is—
My name is Anton, and yeah, I'd just like to say this, that I read the ordinance, and I don't see anything that would have any hard effect on the landlords, you know? And I believe that the landlords—if they're talking about bad landlords, they need to deal with that within their group because they're the ones behind it. It's not—the tenants, you know? And I'm speaking for the good tenants. I'm not talking for the bad tenants. And there are—you know, if—like, say, the COVID. Who do you blame on that? A lot of this that we're dealing with right now, it has to do with the COVID, where, you know, where we're at at this point in time. And I urge you guys to pass that ordinance. There is nothing in there that restricts the landlords other than what they should be doing as a landlord. And if they are a good landlord, they shouldn't worry about it. And if they are bad, yeah, they have something to worry about because it's only fair, you know? I just urge you guys to pass that, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Anton. Next is Daniel Clemmie, and then Jacob Newcomb, and then Tom Hormel. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President and Council. My name is Daniel Clemmie, the President of the Landlord Association. And I'd like to say that we were able, as an association, to support this ordinance. However, since it changed at the last second, I wasn't able to get a board vote in order to do that. So, as you can see, I'm wearing a hat that says Landlord Association. I wear a lot of different hats. I'm going to take this one off. I'm going to put on my Housing Navigator hat, because I'm actually for the ordinance personally and professionally. I'm asking that you pass ordinance C36330. So I started my career in rapid rehousing for Goodwill's SSVF program. I was a landlord liaison. I was a landlord liaison for the Spokane Housing Authority. I'm a current COC board member. I was on the COC Veterans Subcommittee for three years. Actually, won the Washington Multifamily Housing Association's Community Service Award. I was put on the Emergency Operations Center through Spokane County to help people at Camp Hope find housing. And actually, Mr. Council President Brakes and Nadine both put my company in the first tranche of support for helping people at Camp Hope find housing, which I have found. The reason why I did not know about this ordinance changing today was because I was busy doing an inspection on a 36-unit complex that has multiple vacancies in it for people at Camp Hope today. Somebody went and bought an apartment building to house people at Camp Hope. So I'm asking you to please pass this because Housing Navigator is a fantastic organization. We partnered with Gonzaga's Business 470 class to find out, who should we talk to for venture capital? And their answer was BlackRock. And rather than do that, I'm talking here, because I'm from Spokane, grew up in Cheney, Washington. My CFO is from Cheney, Washington. We went to school together, and we're excited to help house people. And I do think that—at least I can agree to that part—I know that having Housing Navigator is going to help house people. I also know that having a mitigation fund is going to be extremely useful for people that rent to people with high barriers, and really just any landlord. I mean, frankly, sometimes damage happens, and I don't think it should necessarily come out of a tenant that's in crisis to take away their money. They're in crisis. It'd be better to have a mitigation fund that the landlord could apply to, I think. You know, like Housing Navigator, we don't even ask tenants to pay deposits at the units we manage. We don't take deposits. We don't screen on things like credit or rental history. We want to house everyone. So I think if you want to house everyone, you're going to vote for this. You're going to—you're going to basically support what you've written on this. I support it. I'm sorry that the Landlord Association cannot. We weren't able to meet in time, but thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming down. Jacob Newcomb, and then Tom Hormel. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jacob Newcomb. I live in Spokane. I live in the Perry District, and I'm here to give my personal support for the bill. I think that these protections will allow tenants to find better housing with better landlords, because this bill will disincentivize slumlord behavior from bad landlords. And a lot of the things I heard today so far talked about how this bill could limit the amount of housing we have available for people. But I don't think we should capitulate to slumlords. When we need more housing, we should build affordable housing and social housing for people, because housing is a human right. Tenants deserve the right to organize with other tenants when something is going wrong in their complex, and this bill will hopefully allow for more code enforcement and the ability for people to do that without being attacked for it. And landlords who are scared of tenants gaining more housing rights in Spokane and are scared that their business won't be profitable anymore with these enhanced rights for tenants, they should check their privilege as owners of capital in America, where capital is king, and should maybe get a job like the rest of us, because paying contractors to do renovations for you is not a job. It's a point of privilege. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thanks for coming down. Thanks for coming down. Tom Hormel. After Tom is CJ, and then Chris Batten. Welcome, Tom.
Welcome. Thank you, Council members, for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Tom Hormel, and tonight I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Spokane Realtors as their 2023 president. We believe that passing this ordinance would have or will have a negative impact on the rental availability and affordability in Spokane. And as you know, we already have a housing shortage of available homes to rent or buy. That shortage is the largest factor in the rising cost of housing in Spokane, as well as other factors like property taxes, which rose last year at the highest percentage of increase in the history across this county. I mention this because we're concerned by the number of smaller landlords who are selling off their units. By our estimates, eight to 10% of these units are sold every year, and this sell-off was predicted by the Whitworth Economics professor in a report called "The Housing as a Social Determinant of Health," that shows over 80% of the smaller landlords in the area were considering selling off their properties because of regulations such as these. I have a client and a friend that is one of the aforementioned small landlords. He and his wife bought, over their lifetime, a couple of rental properties. They have now, they are now worried that due to these type of regulations have passed, they will be forced to either raise the rents, which they have under-rented for years. I mean, they've called me a few times to talk to me about it, and I'm like, wow, I'm moving into one of your units. They said that this will no longer be an option, because they'll be forced to sell their properties or raise those rents. The rising cost of property taxes plus additional fees like insurance and ordinance like this would would change change their ability to continue to keep those houses under market rents. I just read a study yesterday about a building industry, a building industry study that showed 40.6% of the cost of building a multifamily property in 2022 was in government regulations. If you cared about the cost of housing, you do all you could to minimize your impact on the creation of new housing, and that is not done by passing new regulations that will cause builders and developers to pass this over on their way to North Idaho. More supply will reduce demand, and this is a basic principle of economics. A housing, a healthy housing market depends on developers, builders, tenants, and landlords, and we fear regulations like this will force multi-unit development to cease and smaller landlords to sell, forcing further pressure on the housing market. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Tom. CJ, and after CJ is Chris Batten, and then I believe it's Kathleen Nichols.
Hi, there Spokane City Council. Thank you for letting me speak again. I'm a resident here in Spokane. I do currently live up north, but I was a former tenant, and I'm here in solidarity with all tenants and organizations that wish to empower them. Housing is a human right, and tenants have a right to organize. I ask to also wish you consider supporting the ordinance by a simple principle. Landlords are supposed to serve tenants, not the other way around. Yet, in practice, tenants do not have an equal horizontal relationship with their landlords. This asymmetrical relationship has enabled to continue to give room for abuse of power, mismanagement, displacement, and dehumanization of tenants, despite tenants providing the very money that the landlord lives off of. During the historic heat wave in 2020, me and my fellow tenants had our AC break and a gas leak in our basement from overheating. Despite contacting and emailing our housing manager business consistently about the issue, we had little response. The state law tells that landlords were supposed to fix ACs within 72 hours of breakage. I was charitably considered giving them a week. They didn't fix it for two months. Lo and behold, we had to, we had to assemble our own devices to cool down our microwave of a rental house. I've heard many testimonies about tenant, about about encouraging tenants to communicate with landlords or appealing to governments to enforce contemporary tenant laws, but I don't think that they realize the consistent lack of communication and bureaucracy, especially if you're under a housing management that tenants have to swim through, and the fact that many of these contemporary tenant laws often need to be settled in court in which many tenants, many are working class and marginalized, do not have the privilege nor the time to afford the assets to fight for themselves legally. When there is abuse, tenants have only few options to turn, organizing or appealing to their governments to enforce tenant protections. I don't think these ordinances are enough, yet despite that, I believe a healthy, organic government will ensure the well-being of all its subjects. And I'm not talking about business sense or marketability. I'm talking about taking an active role in mutual aid, the safety and the security of our fellow person. I hope that approving these ordinances to give tenants a few protections will, at the very least, be a small step forward. Thank you.
Thanks, CJ. Chris Batten, and after Chris, Kathleen Nichols, and then Andrew Rolls.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Chris Batten. I'm a property owner and landlord. Personally, I'm here to ask you to vote no on this ordinance. I think it's going to be ineffective, and it will cause rents to increase. There's no question about that in my mind. I find it difficult to comment further, since the ordinances that you are voting on tonight were not made public until just shortly before this meeting. You know, I find the lack of transparency disturbing, frankly. You know, the ordinance that we were presented in December is considerably different than what it is tonight, and this should be a first reading of this ordinance tonight, not a final ordinance. So from that perspective, I find the the procedure has been damaged and cheapened in this process. So that's my my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Chris. And Kathleen, I don't know if I'm getting that right, but Kathleen, please introduce yourself, and then Andrew Rolls, and then Kate Bits.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Kathleen Nichols, and I own River City Management. You've taken testimony from tons of people this evening. I'm here to ask you to vote no on the ordinances, and I think with the multiple testimonies, it's really hard to go over and hammer on you over and over again with the same things, but it will increase rents for tenants. In regards to the tenants that are sitting behind us, that I think Ryan spoke to on the screen, we aren't the bad guys. It's those landlords that aren't here. It's those landlords that don't maintain their properties. We provide safe, quality places for people to live, and we try really hard to house those people. And I brought an example in regards to the universal background screening, and my concern is how good is the person that's going to be doing that screening that's going to provide that? On February 2nd, I was provided a very nice employment verification letter. Looks really good. It's for a business called Bedbug Evictors, and this woman works for this company, said that she was guaranteed 20 hours a week at $22.50 an hour. The address of this property is 1208 West Boone Avenue. Do any of you councilpeople know what that is? That's the STA bus barn. So I went a little step further, and I called the city of Spokane to see if this Bedbug Evictors was registered or had a business license. Bet y'all know what the answer is? No. How can we accept a universal background screening if we don't know who's done the screening and how far they've taken that screening? How can we trust what's been provided to us by applicants is true and factual information? Please, don't vote for these ordinances. It's only going to make things worse. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Andrew is next, and then Kate Bits, and then Justin Brown.
Council President, members of council, for the record, I remain Andrew Rolls with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. You've heard our thoughts expressed effectively by other speakers tonight, so I'll keep it brief. We're committed partners of the City Council and have been so since our organization was established in 1995. We strive to collaborate with elected representatives and government officials from across the region on behalf of a downtown business community that is pragmatic and works to find the most beneficial solutions to the problems which we face downtown regardless of what a part of the political spectrum they may they may come from. I like to think that we do a decent job of keeping up with council's work, but we're in a bind tonight because we don't have a strong understanding of a complex set of policies that affect one of the most fundamental aspects of commerce and life in general, and that is where, which which is where and how people live. The problem is that we're not comfortable in making a definitive statement on these ordinances, because we've only had access to them theoretically since this morning, and in reality, only since about noon today. What may be the better of the two ordinances covers 22 pages and contain 21 legislative text changes compared to the previous version. This was the copy of the ordinance we could get our hands on today in a somewhat timely fashion. The other ordinance, we never saw, we never actually saw, and it had to be interpreted by way of inference. At this point, the only thing we can say definitively is that the problem that we have is not the policies, but the process. We simply don't know what's being proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Andrew. Kate Bits, welcome, and then Justin Brown, and then Hadley Morrow.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm so pleased to know that the City Council is about to vote on these ordinances. The groundwork for them was laid in 2018. Back then, I participated in several landlord-tenant forums where we heard from many landlords, many tenants, and at that point, I was a tenant. It's taken long enough to bring these to a vote that now I'm a landlord. I own and rent out two apartments. And that change in my circumstances has brought a perspective shift. Now I more deeply understand the high level of responsibility that rests on our shoulders as housing providers in the middle of a housing crisis. Not all of us are meeting that responsibility, and if we really see ourselves as stakeholders in our city as opposed to people who feel ready to flee the community at the drop of a hat, we do need to get more serious about our role. So let's talk about registries. While big corporate landlords and management companies can make it very clear that their listings are legitimate in a world of scams trying to take advantage of tenants in need, as a small landlord, I very much welcome the opportunity to get my apartments registered and show that I'm not out to waste anyone's time. Similarly, a unified background and credit check would take a big financial and logistical burden off my shoulders. In the past, I've declined to do background and credit checks to avoid that cost to myself, and of course, to avoid passing that cost on to my applicants, so I'd love to have access to that as a resource. Regular inspections, proactive code enforcement, and relocation money for people have to move out of poorly maintained apartments are measures that our city needs as well. When I began looking for a home to purchase back in 2019, it quickly became sadly obvious that a lack of regular inspections has caused our housing stock to degrade to a really alarming degree. We need to hold those accountable who aren't caring for their tenants or for our housing stock, as this neglect is leading to loss not just of our housing units, but also in the end to our neighbors' lives. I also can't imagine a better use for our business licensing fees than the Code Enforcement Fund, which will be such a vital step toward ensuring that everyone respects the rules that we all agree to when we take up the important work of providing housing to people in our city. I've also lived in apartments where I dealt with issues like black mold and mouse infestations with little response from my landlords. I'm excited to know that tenants in these situations will have access to relocation fund, as well as the ability to take civil legal action when their landlords fail them in such egregious ways. I guess, in the end, I try my best to do my best by my tenants, but they have to rely on my goodwill to know that I am going to keep up with maintenance, to know that I'm going to handle emergencies, to know that I'm going to deal fairly with them. I don't have the power to promise them that things are going to stay that way. Only you, as our City Council members, can ensure that the respect all tenants deserve is better enshrined in our laws, and I hope that you'll take that step tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Justin Brown, welcome, and then Hadley Morrow, and then Desda Finn.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Justin Brown. I own a construction company here in town. I'm also a landlord, and I've been a tenant. And I first just want to ask you to vote no on this tonight. Give us the opportunity to read what was basically published today and sent out for our review today. I know you've heard the same testimony from many people, so I'll give you a little bit of different testimony. As a contractor, I don't like to work in the city of Spokane. When Harlan Douglas years ago put that sign on Division that said, "Thinking of moving your business to Spokane, don't," I think I agreed. And I've done a lot of work in Spokane, and we've built over 3,000 buildings in Spokane over the years, and working in the city of Spokane isn't fun. Not that it has to be fun, but when it comes down to business, it is about money, and it's about making money. We want to serve people, but we can't serve people if we're not making a profit. We want to make a reasonable profit. We don't have to be greedy, but we want to make a profit so that we can be here tomorrow. And I think if people think it through, they recognize if business owners aren't making a profit, they're not going to be able to make the repairs on the structures, they're not going to be able to be in business tomorrow. So I want to ask, because I think that housing is critical, it's important, and if we push this ordinance through now, what we're doing is we're monetizing something that's going to create bigger problems for us, because the big issue today is we have a housing crisis. Try to call a contractor right now and see how quick you can get anything done in this current market. How fast can anybody respond to you right now? Most of my contracting friends are anywhere from six months to 12 months out on any kind of start right now. So you vote yes on something like this, and you add and pile on more work now? We don't get new home starts. We don't get new unit starts. Why don't we go back and look at what the urban growth development line looks like? I think there was a lawsuit between the Spokane County and the city of Spokane, right? And the urban growth development or urban growth boundary line is under a moratorium until 2025. Maybe we need to look at making some changes there. That said, and I know I'm running out of time, I do appreciate that there's strides being made, and it is encouraging, and I just hope that we continue to make good decisions in policy so that we can actually solve problems and not run ourselves into the ground by creating policy that creates bad monetary policy that then in turn doesn't actually solve a problem. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Justin. Hadley Morrow, and then Desda Finn, and then Andrea Gallardo.
Good evening, Council. I'm Hadley Morrow. I am the Secretary for the NAACP chapter in Spokane, where I definitely recognize that our membership as people who want to advance people, communities of color, definitely recognize that communities of color are disproportionately represented amongst people who are unable to access property ownership and who are facing some of the large portion of discrimination that we see in tenant landlord discrimination. But I'm actually just here as myself, a citizen lifelong of Spokane, who's also a resident of Lincoln Heights right now. I have 10 years as a renter. In that time, I spent anywhere between 30 and 60% of my income every year into rent, which meant that it was very, very hard for me to build up the savings to get to a space where I could become a homeowner. I have been a homeowner for the last two years. That only became possible because of the death of my grandfather and the fact that I inherited wealth from a white man, from generational wealth, that made it possible for me to afford my down payment. It would not have been possible were it not for that privilege that I have. But also, I'm speaking to you as someone who has experienced homelessness in the full scope of going from absolutely not believing that I had a place to sleep or anybody who wanted me in their house to sleep there, and now knowing that I have the security that there is a place that I can call mine, that I can afford, and that I don't have to have that fear anymore. To me, I know deeply what a privilege it is to have a home, and because of that, I am incredibly excited that I have the opportunity to now own a house that I can then share with others. I am renting out my basement. I have rented out my basement to folks who have been fleeing domestic violence and who people who have been in medically fragile situations during COVID. What I am frustrated with is a recognition that for many, many years, I could not afford a mortgage. I did not then make the decision to exploit another renter in order to pay for my mortgage. I made the decision to work my butt off as a renter and get absolutely taken advantage of in many spaces in this town. But sorry, I'm getting off topic, honestly, because I feel hurt. I'm just going to actually speak from the heart for a second. As someone who personally experienced homelessness, I was writing down a lot of the words that I heard used to describe the situation that I had been in, less attractive, too stressful to rent to, and things like that just reminded me again about the vulnerable position that renters sit themselves in, especially renters who have found themselves in a difficult time. And it is just at the end of the day, if I have to make choices, I am hoping that I am continuing to support and be part of a city council that's going to speak up for the people who have the least amount of privilege, the least amount of power, the most vulnerability, because I believe that is the point in having a government and a social safety net. My hope today is a yes vote. I'm asking for a yes vote. I am super grateful for the energy the council has put into this and the time and effort to listen to community members. I had all of this stuff written and honestly just got really, really friggin' emotional listening, and I just really want to speak to how important it is to me to recognize that housing is a human right. Currently, we treat it as a commodity. I understand that in a system where housing is a commodity, it's actually an investment, and investment is inherently risky. No one's promising you a payout, no one's promising you a salary, and that's a risk. And I'm sorry that we live in a world that's full of risk. I want to see a place where we have less risk for people who are at risk of homelessness. And yeah, it's okay for me if our city takes on a little bit more risk for business owners and property investors, so thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, Hadley. Desda Finn, and then Andrea Gallardo, and then Terry Anderson. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. Good evening, President Beggs, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak today, and I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. I know it is for the better good of our community, and I'm here for that. My name is Desda Finn. I'm a real estate professional. I'm a one-shop landlord, and I'm a property manager here in Spokane. I'm compelled to show, I'm compelled to share my testimony about the ordinances that are being voted on tonight. The universal background screening will not solve the issue at hand, which is getting renters into properties. Providing universal reports will only prevent the tenant from paying a fee over and over again, but it does not do anything to help the tenant pass the background check. Each landlord sets their own rental criteria, so providing one report would not assure the applicants an approval or housing. The per-unit fee proposed will not in any way come near the amount of money a mitigation fund would need to get started. I'm self-employed. I don't have a regular paycheck. I don't have a retirement account. I don't have a retirement account. I bought a house, kind of like the last lady that just spoke, you know, divorced, debt, dropped out of college. I couldn't even get a checking account. And the only reason I wasn't homeless is because somebody gave me a place to live for free for three months while I worked four jobs to pay off my debt and to prove my credit and to buy a house as a single person, as a single woman. I've come before and testified with all kinds of statistics about my property management company, my own personal experience, my inventory that I manage, and it hasn't seemed to make any difference. And so I want to share with you my experience in the last 30 days. The last three tenants I've moved out are now homeless. Their leases were not renewed, and when I asked for a forwarding address, I was told it was their car. Two of those tenants were receiving rental assistance. One of them was evicted. All three of the families are homeless. They violated their leases. They weren't paying their utilities. One particular tenant received $21,000 in rental assistance, paid by third parties. She also got money to move into the property. When she moved out, a week after her lease expired, the place was trashed. She owed rent, the yard was trashed, she had unauthorized pets, we had to completely renovate the property. Thank you for your time.
But thanks for coming down. Is Andrea here somewhere?
Andrea had to leave. She has kids, so she had to go and take care of that.
Thanks for letting me know. Terry Anderson is next, and after Terry is Eric Johnson, and then Hannah Nelson.
Council President, just quickly on that, if Andrea has a written testimony, she can submit it for the public record.
If she wants to email it to us, or hard copy to us, yeah.
Hi, my name is Terry Anderson, and I'm the director, excuse me, I'm the director of the Spokane office and the state policy director for the Tenants Union of Washington State, and I am here speaking in favor of these ordinances. Thank you for recognizing tenants' concerns and bringing these ordinance to a vote. While we've been frustrated with delays and postponements, we are grateful to be here today. Tenants have been meeting for years prior to COVID pandemic to establish tenant protections in Spokane. The moratorium on evictions provided more protections during the pandemic, so the ordinances were deferred and postponed for years. Now Spokane renters need these ordinances more than ever. A recent tenant survey was conducted by The Zone at the Northeast Community Center with nearly 1,500 renters submitting responses. Results of this survey show that 57% of Spokane tenants are worried about being evicted. 59% have received a rent increase in the last six months. 43% received a rent increase of more than $500. 66% of renters have had to take out a loan to pay rent. 48% owe back rent, and 61% have been unable to pay more than two monthly bills in order to pay their rent. This survey paints a picture of a city full of very insecure renters who desperately need protections. While the ordinances before you tonight do not specifically address many of the concerns reported in this survey, it does lay a foundation by creating a chapter in the Spokane Municipal Code that regulates rental housing for more tenant protections to follow. These ordinances will also preserve existing affordable housing and neighborhoods that have aging rental properties by expanding code enforcement services and adding new code enforcement officers. This is crucial now because of the missing middle pilot project that incentivizes demolition and new construction that will cause gentrification and displacement of the most vulnerable tenants in Spokane. These ordinances will give code enforcement more officers to improve substandard housing instead of demolishing the homes where tenants are living and forcing them to move with a near nonexistent vacancy rate to construct new housing with higher rents. We talk to tenants every day through hotline, workshops, clinics, and meetings, and there are not just two or three or even a handful of landlords who violate the Landlord-Tenant Act. Tenants call us every day, so I can't even name two or three. We hear from about hundreds of landlords who are in dispute with their tenants. And not all violations involve code enforcement. Tenants who live in fear of losing their housing do not have the same quality of life as homeowners, and the racial imbalance of who owns a home in Spokane means BIPOC households are at risk and living in fear of becoming homeless. While there's no construction dollars in this ordinance to produce newer and more expensive housing, it will preserve existing housing that is currently affordable that would otherwise deteriorate and be, or else be demolished. So I want to thank you and urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Terry. Eric Johnson, and then Hannah Nelson, and then Zachary McGuckin. Welcome, Eric.
Thank you so much. Thank you, City Council, for having me. My name's Eric Johnson. I am with the Spokane Association of Realtors. I'm also a landlord, owner of property management company, development company, and my whole family's been in real estate our entire lives. I will say, this ordinance, as far as the business registrations and the fees and the code enforcement, I'm not necessarily against that. When Karen and I talked about this upfront, she said, hey, we need to regulate these bad actors. And I said, well, it sounds like an enforcement issue, not a regulatory issue, right? The regulations are there, they're just not getting enforced. As the Tenants Union representatives said in the public hearings, they said, hey, our LTA is just kind of a, you know, suggestions, which is, it's not true, it's actually law. And so my fear is, the first, so this ordinance has been bifurcated, I've had the privilege of reading through it. My fear is, I also own a real estate brokerage, is that our non-unoccupied owners, our smaller landlords, will sell their properties, and I'm going to benefit from that. Yay me. I don't want to. I really don't, because that inventory needs to stay there so there can be affordable housing for folks. That's one side. But that part of the ordinance, okay. The second part has a couple issues with the universal background check. It doesn't say that the landlord has to take it. So now we're going to fund a program, and I believe the universal background check, at least the hearings I've been through, that exists in present day. You can get a universal background check from Sunday. Maybe I'm wrong, and so you can correct me. But if the landlord doesn't have to take it, could those funds be used, directed somewhere else within the enforcement side of things versus being thrown down that rabbit hole, then the landlord's like, well, we're not going to look at it anyways? Do you know what I mean? So that seems a bit like it could be wasteful. The other side of it is the legal mitigation fund. Those funds, it says it's going to be funded for one year and then sustained with the successful lawsuits moving forward. I've been a party to a couple frivolous lawsuits. Actually, I've never been a party to one that was legitimate, and had to defend ourselves, spent a bunch of money on attorneys to get it dismissed. A successful lawsuit is a settlement. So this incentivizes that legal entity to file cases, to get settlements, to then fund itself, and that's a concern to me. There's got to be, because I looked, there's clear, there's some other entities out there that are providing legal services for tenants. It seems like you could go into partnership that might be better use of money. So those are my suggestions. I'm trying to come with some sort of solutions, but thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down. Hannah Nelson, and then Zachary McGuckin, and then our last speaker is John Alder. Welcome, Hannah.
Thank you, Council President and council members. Good evening. My name is Hannah Nelson. I am grateful for the opportunity to be heard tonight and to voice my support for this ordinance, or now these two ordinances. I live, work, and rent in the West Central neighborhood, where I've seen fellow renters, especially our most vulnerable populations, struggle. I'm lucky to have a reliable landlord and a home that I love, but the ability to get into and stay in a good home in Spokane shouldn't come down to luck, especially in our very volatile housing market. I won't repeat too much of what my fellow supporters of these ordinances have already said, they've already covered it really well, but I would like to remind everyone that about half of our fellow Spokaneites are renters. This ordinance, or these ordinances, are an opportunity for city council to be responsive to the unique needs and vulnerabilities of all of these Spokaneites in a very tangible way tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Zachary McGuckin. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Zachary McGuckin. I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm going to try to not repeat as much as well. So like we talked about, renters in Spokane are bearing the brunt of a historic housing crisis. When the eviction moratorium ended, landlords in Spokane drove rent increases to the highest in the nation. Our housing crisis continues unabated for renters, which, like Hannah stated, is 50% of the Spokane population, and about 30% of those spend, or half of those spend over 30% of their monthly income on rent, and many are severely rent burdened, paying over 50% of their monthly income on rent. Housing unaffordability is a boot on the neck of Spokane's working class. It's imperative that the council passes the tenants' ordinance with the supermajority as a first step on the path towards housing justice for the workers who drive Spokane's economy. These tenant protections will open the door to improved living conditions and neighborhoods, a meaningful reduction in homelessness, and a path towards increasing agency and stability for tenants and their families. The ordinance will improve living conditions for many renters and simultaneously boost the health and safety of our neighborhoods. Code enforcement will be empowered with the funding and authority to carry out inspections, which will ensure that rental units and buildings meet the legal standard to be habitable. Tenants often fear retaliation for reporting code violations, thus the importance of regular inspection of all rental units. The development of the rental registry is essential for ensuring that Spokane has the information and data necessary to inspect and provide accountability for landlords who fail to provide dignified housing. When neighborhoods are filled with safe and healthy homes, its residents are also healthier, which leads to more vibrant and safe communities. I also want to say that this ordinance advocates for protections against landlord retaliation, which is a big reality for tenants in Spokane. And like most things in America, this isn't only an issue of class but also an issue of race. 81% of Spokane's black citizens are renters, and so this is a largely vulnerable population that will be protected through this ordinance. So please vote yes for this important first step on the road to ending Spokane's housing security crisis. Thank you.
And John, I see Andrea's here, so I'm going to have her come up before she's here. Come on up, Andrea.
Hello, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I'm the co-founder of MAC Movement. We're the ones that are out there every Monday doing free food with the side of free speech because that is our right, freedom of speech and to have food, where they're providing not only a safe space but a comfortable space for people to come and use their freedom of speech, whether it is coming up here and speaking to you guys or doing chalk art with us out there. Because like I said, food is one of our rights and so is shelter. And because housing is a human right, it's just something that we should be voting for. I've never considered myself an activist or a protester. I'm a protector, a protector of human rights, and that's what we're here today deciding on, because this affects all of us, everybody here. There is hope that you all vote yes, and just know that we're all watching, seeing who is saying yes and who is voting for people over profit. You have the power, the power to make the votes for changes for the better, and I hope that you do so. I will always stand, stand up against bullying. I'm tired of asking for things, that's our rights, and basically getting punished for it. These asks are not new asks. The Tenants Union has worked tirelessly for years, working with the city council to get protection laws put in place for Spokane. One way to help homeless here in Spokane is to keep people in their homes, and one way to do that is to pass these tenant protections. Thank you, guys, again, and it's been a long night. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. All right, our last speaker, John Alder.
I am John Alder. I have 43 years of rental experience in Spokane, and they show you the difference in paying rent. 1977, I was only paying, making $2.70 an hour, but I only had to pay 25% of my income for rent. Now you got people making $15 bucks an hour and forking over 50% of their income for rent. Also, along the way, I've accumulated quite a few maintenance problems I don't care to deal with. One time, I had so many potato bugs in my shower leaks, they became like permanent roommates. And also, there were times I had to turn the heat outside of a building, because they wouldn't fix the one that was inside. Also, turning my water, hot water under the sink became a common problem as well. As for the $15 fee that they're all complaining about, quite a few times, they charge $35 for shampooing the carpet, but don't use it. So once you take 15, that's 35, still come out ahead $20. And as far as all these landlords complaining about licenses, why don't you check all the small businesses on Hamilton or Garland that only have a couple people and have to get licenses? It's time for you to get a license, too. Also, I'm a little tired of hearing about people like, this one lady who was making only $900 a month, but she had $650 that came out for rent, yet they still changed the date she paid the rent because she was late, she lost the apartment. They later started charging more, and it's $650 a dollar for rent. Also recently, we also have a single mom working two jobs that already have a $1,700 duplex and gets a $1,000 increase. And everything we need to tell landlords, too. I have been to two worker memorials in 2021, 2022. 160 dead in 2021, 144 dead in 2022, have not heard of any landlords die from being homeless. Now, these two ordinances are only a start. We asked for 11 ordinances in the Afra Mansion 2018 meeting, and we promise you, we'll be coming back to all our past. We also, you check the state legislature, because we are finding increases in rent. Now, what you can do is pass these two ordinances to start creating affordable, safe housing. Oh, by the way, I want to answer a question about tenant education. All you landlords could go to tenantsunion.org and get all the tenant education you want. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, John. That brings us to the end of public testimony, right by 9:30.
Good job, Council President.
Well, good job, everyone out there. I thought everyone did a really good job of getting up to the mic and being concise, so thanks, everyone, and thanks for respecting everyone and bringing us all those lived experiences that we have our own, but it's so much richer to hear from all of you. Council, I'm just going to check in with you. The meeting would technically be over in less than a minute, but I'm imagining that we want to just continue discussing and voting tonight, unless, that's what I'm thinking, except for Zach. Is there a motion to extend for purposes of council debate and voting?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, aye, any abstentions? All right, we're extended. All right, who wants to start out? And my plan is, we'll have two separate votes. We'll vote on C36336 first, and then, that's the newer one, and then C36330, which is the substitution. I'm going to take commentary on both, and then we'll just do the votes, one after the other.
So we heard a number of folks talk about confusion, about last-minute stuff. Do you want to address that now, or would you like to address that when you're last?
Well, I'll address it a little bit. The division of the ordinance did not change the ordinance, the same ordinance that was published and has been out there for a while is essentially the ordinances we're passing. But we did have a request. Councilmember Cathcart and Stratton requested, hey, let's break them apart. So it was... So it wasn't creating a new ordinance. There was always, every time there was a draft, City Legal did make a few changes, but the substance, in my opinion, of the ordinance really goes back to December, which is we were going to raise some money for code enforcement because that's what we heard from landlords and tenants, that we have laws on the books, they're not being enforced. We had the portable background check. The big change on that is that it's completely voluntary for now, and we took out any structures on what it looks like. We've actually had a great opportunity to talk with Akronet, that does 70% of the background checks for landlords, and I think there's a really good possibility that we'll come up with one that they will help us lead on, that will be very accurate, and landlords would accept. But at this point, it's in as a voluntary program until the city figures that out. We also heard about landlord mitigation fund. We've updated that to include any landlords with a priority going towards landlords that rent to high-risk tenants. We've always heard about tenant relocation and legal fees for those few landlords that don't keep their properties habitable. Those are still there. The registry is something that has been there before. It's been simplified. The business license fee, that's always been the law, it just wasn't enforced for many years. So there haven't been a bunch of changes conceptually, in my opinion. People can have their own opinions and read it, but it's essentially what it's been for most of the month with some minor refinements, in my opinion.
Thank you.
That answers your question.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay, I can't touch this because it's broken.
And you're touching it.
I'm touching it because I want to make sure people can hear me. I want to thank everybody for coming down tonight, and I especially want to thank Nicolette Occultree. I don't know if she's, oh, she's up there. She's been really helping us through every meeting to kind of put our thoughts together and find ways to balance, help us balance the needs as we heard them. I want to thank councilmember Cathcart especially. He's been very patient. He's brought a great depth of knowledge and experience in the discussions. Council President Beggs, this has been quite a journey, and I'm grateful that we were able to defer the ordinance a few weeks back and allow some more time for discussions, allow time for tenant and landlord sessions that we did and the community meeting that we did. A couple of things I wanted to say, just because I wrote down notes. Somebody mentioned a FICA score as they went through or with the credit check. That FICA score is not, is not in that ordinance. That's not, if I'm correct, that's not there. But I do want to, I do want to say something I want to make it public because as we were going through this process, some of us were concerned about that $25 per door fee. Again, we want to create a balance, and we got to $15, and I thought, you know, I'm going to call tenants' union and talk about that. So I called the tenants' union and said, you know, let's, let's just bring this out. Let's just call it what it is. We know that there's going to, if we do a per-door fee and we're thinking $15, we know that the landlord is going to put that on the tenant. So why don't we say the tenants pay that $15 fee, and it would be for every unit? And then that $15 fee, the landlord could take that fee and use it to do their landlord registration, which would be the easiest way to get that money back to the city, right? Because they're going to be using a city portal to do that. So as we calculated the numbers on that, it's a, it's a good amount of money that we could generate to fund the housing navigator, the code enforcement staff that we need. We work very closely with code enforcement. Louise is here, too. Thank you, Louise, to talk about what code enforcement needs to be of benefit to both landlords and tenants. And the conversation with the tenants' union was so gracious. It was absolutely that 25 seems high, 15, let's, we can live with that. And it just felt good to have, I didn't get yelled at, there wasn't a big argument. It was like, absolutely, Karen, we've talked about that. 25 seems high, let's do the 15. So as we talked about those door fees, I just want people to know that the process is to get that money back to the city so that we can put that in funds or in buckets with other funds we're bringing in to provide programs, whether it's education, code enforcement, legal services for both landlords and tenants. So I want to make sure that's clear. The business license, that's been in our code for a long, long time. Landlords are going to have to get business licenses, and we should have enough code enforcement staff to help us enforce that because we haven't enforced it in a long time. So again, the purpose in the discussions was really, how can we generate funds to provide those resources to both? And I have to quote Alexis because she said something that just kind of stopped my whole process when she said, "We have to be the adults and we have to make the hard decisions." And what I want to say, because I've been around a long time and I've worked with landlords and tenants on other issues, this is the most spirited, compassionate, energized groups you will ever meet. Tonight, I've seen a little too much hatred and anger, felt a little threatening at times, the energy felt a little negative, and all I could think about was if the realtors, if the tenants' union, and if the landlord association could pull together and create, and I know I'm going to sound like a nun that taught me in fifth grade, a coalition to work together to bring these things forward, to bring protections forward, to bring ideas forward that makes more of a balance, that creates less burdens on tenants and landlords. I just think that would be absolutely fabulous, and I, I know we have to work together for a solution. I think we've tried really hard on this council, but as I look at this room and as I look back to 2017, 2018, 2019, those experiences working with realtors, landlords, and tenants hasn't always been positive. I mean, there have been, there have been some moments when you just want to pull your hair out, but the passion and the energy with the three groups really could be turned into something that could be positive and forward-thinking and something other municipalities haven't quite thought about. Everybody in this room is smart. Everybody in this room wants the best for the people they're serving, and I would just love it if a landlord person, a tenant person, and a realtor could sit in a room and say, we're going to, you know, every three months, we're going to set up just a talk session to just sit down and talk about these issues so we can kind of move forward and understand each other better. Universal background check, you cleared that up, that that is going to be not mandated. And, you know, it's been a long road, and I'm grateful for all the input that we've received, but I really, really would, would suggest that when things settle down, when people have an opportunity to take a deep breath, that you meet outside of a council meeting, or you, you don't wait until everybody's overheated and angry, that you begin to have regular communications with each organization together and see what you can come up with and see what, what you can change together, what you can improve together, because that's the only way I see forward, is if we, we've got to learn how to work together and move things forward from all different aspects. It can't just be one. So I'm going to support this. I'm proud of the work we've done. I'll support, support both ordinances. Again, I thank councilmember Cathcart. He put a lot of work into this, and I learned so much from him. And, you know, if I was going to be here another four years, I'd say we could just keep doing this, but I just hope everybody thinks about doing something positive with all this because it, to me, it's worth it.
I guess I can- Councilmember Cathcart, I think you're next.
I was trying to go a little bit later. I always go early on, so. So, a couple of things. Councilman Stratton mentioned that, you know, we worked quite a bit on this over the last several weeks, and, and I, you know, we've landed with some disagreements, but, but ultimately, I do want to talk about just, you know, how grateful I am, frankly, for having the opportunity to really hear firsthand from both tenants and landlords on the issues that we're dealing with. I thought that the, the listening sessions in the town hall were very helpful and really helped, helped me to think about things, and I agree. I mean, I think we should have those listening sessions more often. I heard a number of compliments from, from all sides, especially regarding that town hall, because we had folks from all sides in the room talking to each other, occasionally a little heated, but it was really good dialogue that I had never witnessed firsthand. And so I think that was incredibly helpful for me to see and, and hear. You know, I really think we heard a lot today about supply and how important supply is to our housing crisis. We are in a housing crisis. There's no doubt about it. And I want to say, I think 2022 was really the year that we finally got our act together and started to address that issue. We passed a number of big things, some I'm, I'm glad to have championed and had a hand in, whether it's BOKA or MFT reform or ADUs. That's the solution to the supply crisis and the solution really to housing affordability long-term. Obviously, nothing gets built overnight, and that's going to take some time, and we've got a lot of processes internally that we have got to work out at the city to help expedite and make those things actually function. We have a number of things coming our way in the next few weeks that I think risks all of it, frankly, and puts a lot at risk and that we're going to have to think through very, very hard. Different issue for a different day. But, and so I think, you know, we've, we've really started to at least try to address the supply, and, and so with part one of this, you know, again, we've got two parts to this ordinance, I'll refer to part one, which is 330. Part one, 330, I think really starts to address quality, and I think it's important. We have a number of laws on our books. They've been on our books for a while, just standard codes for habitability that we do not enforce. And somebody earlier mentioned, you know, really, is this an enforcement or regulatory action? And I think there's a modicum of additional regulation in this, a very small amount, but really, it creates a framework for actually enforcing the existing codes that are already on the books. A basic registry, I think, is going to help with communication and tracking the status of rental housing. The inspection process, I think, has been narrowed substantially over the last two months to really focus in on the problem areas in our rental housing market. And as was mentioned, the door fee has come down, and it's honest in the ordinance. It's honest that it's a tenant fee, which is how it would have been anyway, and at least we're honest about it, which I think is really important, too. And so there's a couple of things that were brought up today, concerns, and, you know, whether it's the level of deposits, affordability, renting to own, tenant unionization, reducing bureaucracy, none of that is addressed in either of these. None of that is contemplated in either of these. There have been past ordinances years ago, long, long ago, that contemplated a little bit of that, but, but really, that is not what we're talking about today. We're really talking about the quality, in my mind, and that's the core issue that we're trying to focus on. And so that's why I'm going to vote yes on 330, because I think it actually gets to the core substance of what we're trying to do, which is to improve and, and ensure basic habitability standards. This doesn't change existing code in terms of what those standards are, but it says that we're going to do what we were supposed to be doing all these years, which is enforcing, and this creates the framework to do that. I have a number of concerns with items in 336, part two, as we've called it a little bit, and I think there's some things I actually agree with conceptually in there, but I don't think we have given it the adequate time or thought or, or anything else to work it out. Background checks, one example. I think, I think there's a great argument for, for, you know, some form of universal background check, but we are not there. Every single expert, everybody we talked to said, this just has not worked anywhere. We've really not found concrete examples of other communities that have done this or done it well. Not to say that we couldn't figure it out, but I just, even though it's not a mandate in this, I don't want to rush a policy that will get misinterpreted, I have no doubt, will get misinterpreted as something that landlords are mandated to follow, and, and I don't like false promises, and I, and I feel like that's the way that that, it will get interpreted. I would rather have a task force that can just look at this and find some good recommendations, be it on a universal background or other policies around backgrounds, if we're going to continue to look at that. But I don't think the way this is written and the format it's in, to me, makes, makes sense. And then another, it was mentioned earlier on the legal services, you know, I just, I feel, I fear that we've created this program in a, in a more biased way and not a balanced way. And, you know, we really need to have a system, I think, where we're working together hand in hand, because again, we have to have the housing, we have to have the units, we have to have, and so it does require, I think, this level of collaboration between tenants and landlords that I don't think is, is allowed in a, in a lot of ways under what's in 336. And I think we need to just be a little bit more thoughtful, a little bit more concerted in, in how we, we think about these things. Anti-retaliation, strongly support. But again, it got, I think, the version that's in here is just, it's not quite what's in RCW. I think it's, it's, the way it's written, it can be misinterpreted, and I don't like that. I don't want, I don't want those types of, of things in here that are going to create issues for misinterpretation. The mitigation fund, again, I support. I've been a strong advocate of mitigation fund. I don't think we're funding it to the right level in 336. I have suggested 10% of $1,590. You might disagree with me, but I've suggested 10% of $1,590 over a few years to help to get that seeded and funded. I have heard that we likely need millions of dollars in a mitigation fund, not $60,000. And so I fear $60,000, again, creates a false promise because it says we're going to have this mitigation fund, and that really is probably going to address three to five to seven units. I mean, with the cost of construction and everything else, it's substantial. And so even after the state pays their share of it, it just doesn't work, and so the math doesn't work. And so that's another concern I have. And so just with the combination of all of those, I'm not going to vote for 336. I don't think it makes sense to, to adopt that one as it is. I think we should be more thoughtful and, and take a longer time in looking at the issues in there. But as I said, I will be supporting 330. I think this is just a very basic enforceability ordinance of what is already in our code, and this just creates the framework to do that, which is why I'll be supporting that one tonight.
Well, I will not be as long-winded as some of my council members because we've kind of heard it all. I will say, when I came on council in 2020, this was the first issue that was before me, tenants' rights, and then COVID hit. So here we are in 2023 with the perfect storm, COVID, rent increases, and supply. This ordinance is not about rent control. We all know that. To me, it is about safety. So the basis for me is dedicated resources for code enforcement. It's a sad statement for us as a city that we had not been enforcing the laws on our books. Shame on us. There was not the resources to do that. We are trying to get the dedicated funding to up our game, to make the units that are out there more safe and habitable for the people who live in Spokane. So code enforcement, the rental registry, and the business license. I'm on both sides. I'm a business owner, and I'm a landlord, and the business license and the head fee for employees, I've been paying that for years, and so it's kind of disappointing that other people have not been paying the business license as in our SMC code. So we all have to step up. We just can't cherry pick the law for what works for us. It is a social determinant of health is to have safe housing. And I heard my fellow council member here, is it a false promise or is it a start? I think it's a start. Nobody's truly happy with this ordinance tonight on both sides of the fence, but we cannot continually kick this can down the road or be a dog chasing his tail because we could end up right back here and- we could end up right back here in 90 days. Or if this doesn't work, it could always come back. We have changed laws. So my mantra is, unless you're dead, it can be changed. And so if it's not working, landlords, tenants, property owners, realtors have the ability to bring something back to us and say, that was a start, but it's not working. Let's look at it this way, and we will have to evolve to meet the needs of our citizens. So I will be supporting both. And again, I'm just happy for everyone who participated. It has been a rigorous exercise in community engagement, but I think it's been a good one for the city and one of the best ones I've seen since I have been sitting in this seat.
I don't talk as much as Councilmember Beengel, so. But I want to thank councilmembers Cathcart, Councilmember Stratton, and Council President Beggs for a lot of their work and time and effort on this, especially over the last few months, and councilmembers who were here before us, including Councilmember Kinnear and Wilkerson at the last minute, who did this work for years, and all the staff that's been doing this work for years, and everyone who came out to also testify. It's clear that there are a lot of emotions tied to this issue. Nothing is more basic to human life as housing and shelter and where you live. And so for that reason, a lot of people do feel strongly about that. And I think nothing is more crucial to having a fair shot in life as making sure that you have stable housing that is safe and healthy for people. And so for that reason, I'll be supporting both of these ordinances. I think that they are not perfect, but they are a good step forward, and it is a good compromise. I think there are things that could have been hidden here that were stronger for the universal background check. We could have looked at, you know, rental increase notification period. We could have looked at a first-in-time regulation that would require landlords to accept the first qualified tenant, but that's not where we were at. And I think that that is representative in these ordinances. And I think that these are a great step forward, like Councilmember Wilkerson said. There's always opportunity to relook at things. I think the registry will help us see. There's a lot of fear that we're going to lose rentals off the market, but once we establish the registry, we'll be able to see, is our movement on or off the market? So I think a lot of the fear that's around these ordinances will actually be clear once we have a registry established and these are into effect. They won't be perfect, and we can always come back and revisit it. I will be here longer than Councilmember Stratton. So we can come back and do it again. Thanks.
Before you talk, I just want to say to all who sat in the audience tonight, we will work on creating a safe space for everybody. I heard that loud and clear that some people felt threatened, and it goes both ways. If we're going to have honest, open dialogue, we really have to be respectful, or we're just wasting our time. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I agree. We talk about creating a safe space. It's important that we actually mean it when we say that. There's been a lot of good discussion tonight. I'll be supporting the first ordinance tonight as well. I was back and forth on it. There are, there are bad landlords in the city of Spokane, and those are, that needs to be addressed. And that was never a question as to, should we have safe housing options? That's always a yes. The trouble is, is that what ends up happening is you, if you start to overregulate an industry, you push more and more people out of it. It becomes run by more and more people, or, excuse me, by fewer and fewer people that are bigger and bigger corporations that end up buying up the stock from the, from the smaller mom-and-pop shops. And then you have less competition in the market. You can create de facto cartels in a market by overregulating. And I will, I will say, there's some language tonight that does concern me. And things that I hear a lot of is, this is a good start. This is a first step. And I'm not going to lie, those are things that concern me, because we can see the stated goal of many in this room by saying, you know, rent control now. And I fear that that's exactly where, you know, this city council is going to go, is that we're going to go, we're going to continue to move in what, you know, we believe is the right direction, and eventually find ourselves in a position that is universally decried by economists left, right, and center, which is, rent control is actually not good for the market. The more and more regulations we put on the market is actually going to create more and more issues for the market. And the things that we're fighting for are actually the things that we're fighting against. That's my issue with these ordinances, is not the intentions. Every single person on this dais cares deeply about the renters and the landlords in this community, and they're doing what they think is the right thing. And I'll never discount that on them. I think they're all doing what they think is the right thing. There are also well-documented cases of the things that we're doing and how it's going to hurt the rental stock. And so I fear that with very good intentions, we're going to continue to impose worse and worse renting conditions on the folks that we say that we're trying to help. So tonight, I'm going to be voting against the second one. I'll vote for the first one, because, again, people actively skirting the law is a problem for me. I believe in upholding the law, and those are things that we need to do. The first step, the start, moving in the right direction, those are things that concern me for the city of Spokane, because we've done some good things for the housing supply as Councilmember Cathcart went. As a, you know, council, we were making very good strides on that, and I'm really appreciative of it, such as the BOKA, the ADUs, et cetera. We've also done a lot to hurt the housing stock and to limit supply in the city of Spokane, such as, you know, we're going to be increasing fees substantially with both the general facilities charges, with the impact fees. There's all kinds of state regulations that are coming down on housing that create more and more costs for housing to get built. And the trouble is, is that it creates more and more expensive housing while the stated goal is creating more affordable housing. We're fooling ourselves if we think this is going to help affordable housing. We're fooling ourselves if we think this is going to help the rental stock. And I appreciate everybody coming out. I appreciate everybody making their piece known, and I appreciate the council extending so that we could hear everybody who is here tonight. I'll be voting against the second one, part two. I'll vote for part one.
Okay, second to last. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. It's a long evening. I don't want to make it longer. And I want to stick to the topic, which is these two ordinances right before us, not general facilities charges or impact fees, but actually what's here. And we should have been enforcing code years ago, starting 20 years ago. If this was always on the books, we weren't enforcing. We tried to do that before Louise was here. We made an effort to get compliance, and the administration at the time scrapped the whole thing, so then we were back to square one. I think it's really important that we start that back up. In terms of the second ordinance, we do need to pass that, and we can make that work. If we don't pass it and go back to square one, then we have lost all the momentum that we built up between Councilmember Cathcart, Councilmember Stratton, Council President. We've worked really hard. I want to keep that momentum going. I am going to support both of these things. I think they're important. I don't think the rhetoric of the sky is falling is going to happen, and we have not one piece of hard data that shows people are going to leave the rental market. We've heard people say they are, but no actual data. So I'm going to support both these, and, again, I appreciate all of you talking about this, giving it the attention it deserves, long overdue. So thank you.
Thanks for leading by example, concise statements, Councilmember Kinnear. I just wanted to go back, because Kate Bitz mentioned, we were in 2018 in the same chambers. I think Kate was working for the council at the time. But we had a year of very robust debate, and even though there were some tensions and feelings in the room today, they were nothing like they were back in 2018. So I just got to say, kudos to all of you and to everyone involved. It is a very different energy and a different space, and people are listening and understanding. Just to hear people acknowledge other people who have different lived experiences is really, really positive. So that's probably the most encouraging thing for me tonight, is that we really have come a long way, I can tell you. And Councilmember Stratton and Cathcart really working together from different political perspectives to try to get, and so it looks like we're going to have 7-0 on one of the ordinances. Who would have ever imagined that in Spokane? So I think we really are making progress. We still have a ways to go. You heard some of the bumps and pinch points from people testifying tonight that are there. So there's more work to do on that. But we have come a long way, and I think part of that is, is the deep commitment of listening. So we spent a year of listening. We, sometimes we had whole meetings just landlords, whole meetings just tenants. We had small encounter groups with facilitators. We tried everything that we could figure out to try to get there, and it didn't work. We gave up. We deferred it, deferred it, we gave up. And then we started a new process where we hired a facilitator, and we had three landlord advocates and their attorney, and three tenant advocates and their attorney. And then we had code enforcement and legal and a few councilmembers, and we worked on things. And we knew we were not going to come up with something that was going to make everyone happy, but we did come up with essentially the core of this ordinance based on the concerns, and we spent 18 months doing that. And we, that's what got us the foundation of this, and it really informed it. And again, I think if you took landlord and tenant advocates and says, what's your ideal, they would say, well, not this. I've got other things that I think we either need to do or not do. But this is a big improvement, in my opinion. And after over seven years on the council, my sense of housing is that there are three legs to the stool of housing. And the first one is there needs to be enough permanently affordable low-income housing for people who are not in the market, they're not working, they can't afford market rent, and you just have to have enough of those units so that people aren't homeless. And this council, over the objection of the mayor and many other people, in 2021, we took a big swing at that when we approved our version of 1590. And we're raising now $7 million a year for permanently affordable housing that this market never had. Last year, we added in an extra $6 million from ARPA as well. We've coordinated our federal dollars now. We have another $10 million of federal dollars that wasn't getting out the door that's going to happen. And this $7 million of ARPA of 1590, that's going to be year after year after year of permanently affordable housing. And at this point, all the projects that were sort of on the books are now funded, because they had so little money every year, and they kind of gamed it out. So we have real opportunities that way. That's one leg of the stool, is permanently affordable housing for people who don't have enough income to pay rent. The second piece is the overall housing supply, and you heard lots of testimony from all sides that in Spokane, as in much of the nation, the 2008 recession just destroyed the housing market, and people just aren't in the market of building for years and years, and that has built up to be thousands and thousands of units. So this council in 2021, there was a Housing Action Plan report, but we did an implementation plan with about 35 specific things that we asked the administration to do, to actually do things like increase the amount of units you could have on a parcel and single family, change setbacks and driveway requirements, condo reform, all these different things that we thought would be a good idea that would actually increase housing at market level. There was a bit of a delay, but once Spencer Gardner was hired as our planning director, that got on track. And in 2022, we passed the Building Opportunity Choice Act, again, 7-0. No one, no one imagined that, and we're the first city in the state to really do that as well. So it was pretty amazing. And so we have addressed that. You know, it's only been in place for a few months, and so we haven't seen it, and it will take several years to build both that permanently affordable housing and markets, market-based. We have substantially, both with the BOKA, and two years earlier, we increased the density of housing in the city, but it will take about five years to do for both of those things. We are still at the legislature championing missing middle housing for all the communities around us, and a bill got out of the House Appropriations on Friday, so there's a really good choice, chance, that the other cities around us will have to do the same, which will help all of our people. And then we're also working really hard on condominium reform to make it much easier to build condominiums so that people can get a toehold in the ownership market that they just can't with a single-family house right now. So we're, we're doing those things. The last leg of the stool, according to the housing experts, is housing stability. And that's really what we're working on tonight, both the health of the housing and the stability of it. And that's, you can go to all different levels on that, but that's what this is about tonight. So we're putting the third leg of the stool in, and I'm so grateful to all of you for being part of the conversation. A few of you, back in 2018, I said, just a handful that I've recognized from 2018. I think you could raise your hand, some of you, yep, were there. But thank you for bearing with us and being here and bringing your wisdom. I want to thank, our council staff really got involved in this, really did a lot of work on that. I want to thank all our council members for that. I want to thank members of the administration for being willing to engage, and I always want to thank our law enforcement for being here, and I want to thank our television crew for staying late. We haven't done a late one in a while, so stories are there. So with that, prepare to vote, and I'm on 36336, also known as part two. Prepare to vote on that.
We're doing part two first, just to-
Yes. Ordinance C36336. Did I write it down wrong?
Nobody voted.
All right. Okay. So that says five to two. Did I say the number wrong, Terry?
I meant C3, or C36366.
You said that.
Okay.
I think you said it right.
All right. Well, I probably said it wrong at least once, but okay. So I'm going to clear that, and then we'll go to C36330. Prepare to vote. And on that, happy note of 7-0 and unity in the community, we are about to adjourn. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We ask that you move out to the chase. Councilmember Stratton is going to give a recap on that. So if you have conversations, please go out there. We're adjourned.